City Council work session to order December 14th, 2021. Welcome, everyone. Just for the record, we're not taking attendance in that it is a work session, but we have the full council here with the exception of Counselor Geary, who's not going to be with us this evening. This evening, we are going to be discussing the code update regarding the towing of vehicle discussions. And we have a staff report, a part of our packet, from Tim, our captain, and Amanda, our city attorney. So I think I'll turn it over to Amanda to kind of open the discussion. But I see Tim is at the city, the civic hall, ready to make some additional information available to us. So Amanda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hill and Council. Amanda Guy-Henman, City Attorney. And with us tonight, in person, but for me via Zoom, is Captain Tim Simons. We're going to be talking with the council tonight about some minor clarifications and updates to Title 10 of the McMinville municipal code regarding abandoned vehicles. So I'm going to pull up my PowerPoint here real quick. Okay, so like I said, we're going to be discussing revisions to the towing of abandoned vehicles. So roadmap for tonight's discussion is we're going to be talking about the purpose of these updates that staff have drafted, the background information that led to these updates being created. Then we're going to walk you through the proposed revisions and then touch on final steps. If the council has any questions along the way, feel free to interrupt us. And in particular, I'll make sure to pause at each section where we're going over the proposed revisions for any questions that you all may have. So tonight, the purpose for the proposed revisions is it started while, so when there were revisions done in 2018, staff believed that those revisions reflected the intent of what the revisions were designed to do, which we'll get into what that was. But experience in implementing those revisions over the last few years have shown us that there could be some clarifications that would further demonstrate what the intent of the abandoned vehicle code is designed to do. So the clarifications in particular that we have highlighted is what the definition of an abandoned vehicle, what qualifies as an abandoned vehicle, how you distinguish between what's an abandoned vehicle and what is a vehicle that is otherwise just parked for an extended period of time, which is another type of violation under the code. So creating a distinction, a clear distinction between those two. And then finally, the process for appealing a tow of an abandoned vehicle. So tonight, we're seeking council feedback on the proposed changes. And if there's any further clarifications that staff should, you know, do before it comes to council for a formal action. So part of the reason that I've asked Captain Simons to participate with us in this discussion is in particular about the background. So I'm going to turn it over to Captain Simons right now to talk about the changes that occurred in 2018 and what sort of led up to those changes.
Thank you, Amanda and city councillors and Mayor Hill. Appreciate the time to speak with you about this. As I'm sure you kind of remember back to 2018, we had proposed some changes to the abandoned vehicle code based off of some hurdles and some issues that had become extremely evident in the code and the way that it was crafted when it was specifically dealing with abandoned vehicles and then the advent of the issues that were presented with RVs that were parking on city streets and public right of ways for extended periods of time. If you recall, the issues prior to 2018, they were that essentially a vehicle could be parked on a public right of way. Staff would have to go out and essentially mark or chalk the vehicle, wait for 72 hours, go back out after 72 hours had elapsed to see if the vehicle had moved at all. Then they would provide notice to the vehicle and the registered owner by posting information on the vehicle and had to wait an additional 72 hours before they could do any enforcement action on the vehicle. If within any point during that timeframe, if the vehicle moved a continuous 300 feet from its original location, the time clock started all over again. And essentially, there was too much time that was being allotted to dealing with these situations. Essentially, they were just being pushed from one place to another place. And staff would have to start the timeframe all over again to get to what would hopefully be a resolution of getting the vehicle off the street and dealt with appropriately. At that point, staff brought forward a, what we felt was an appropriate revision to the city code to allow for a more adequate use of staff time to address and deal with the abandoned vehicles and then also the RVs that were being encountered on a daily and weekly basis. As Amanda has pointed out, that process since 2018 has been beneficial. However, we have found there are some issues that need to be addressed specifically in the language of the code that will hopefully eliminate any future issues that may crop up as far as process is concerned. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have with regards to that information as well.
Let's go ahead and open it up for any councillors that would have questions of the captain or Amanda. I don't see any hands, so let's go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will just note for the third bullet point that our code is also informed by ORS 819.100 and the following, the subsequent statutes. Those govern abandoned vehicles. What they do is they provide general guidance for the essentially citing and the notice requirements and the appeal process for dealing with abandoned vehicles. But it's overall guidance, it's not necessarily getting to the details and the nuances of how to enforce that. So for example, as we'll get into, the state statutes don't have a definition for what is considered an abandoned vehicle, which is why our code needs to explain what that is. It also does, it says that you need to have a hearing process, but doesn't say what exactly that hearing process has to be. So in 2018, there was a concerted effort to make sure that that was reflective of not only the state statutes, but fitted to the issues that were going on in McMinnville. And as Captain Simons and I have both indicated, with some time and reflection, there's definitely some additional clarifications that would help both the staff and the community in understanding what is or is not allowed. So with that, I'm going to go into the proposed revisions. And they're all in attachment one to the staff report. So the first one is on the definition of abandoned vehicle. And there's two main changes that, well, I should say, three main changes that occurred. The first is when the definition originally said abandoned vehicle means a vehicle that remains in violation. There's a question that is created about, well, you now then need to make a determination about if a violation is occurring or not occurring versus it's parked on the right of way. That's really what it's about is has that vehicle been on the right of way, in the right of way for 24 hours and also meets one of the conditions that's listed below, one of the five conditions listed below. I also want to make sure the second green line, I guess, that you'll see is I wanted to make sure that the definition of abandoned vehicle also took into account the RV permit program that we created, which that's the section 10.28.205. So to just further codify that that program exists. And if you're under that program, you cannot be considered an abandoned vehicle. The third change was you'll see in the changes from one and two for the conditions. So originally, number one included both registration and insurance as under number one. So it made it, even though it used the word or, it made it unclear if, there was some confusion about, do both registration and insurance get looked at? Or can just one of those issues, you know, not having registration or not being insured, qualify as abandoned vehicle? And in looking back at the intent from the records that we have from 2018, and based on the fact that it does say or, it seems pretty clear that it meant or. So either it's registered or it's uninsured. And either of those things can make it an abandoned vehicle. So this just further clarifies it by separating out registration from insurance. Moreover, under Oregon vehicle code, those are separate violations. So it also makes sense that they would be separately codified in our abandoned vehicle definition. So this is the proposed revision to the definition of abandoned vehicle. So I'm happy to take any questions if people have any questions or need any clarification on the changes that we're proposing on the definition.
Any questions for Amanda?
When was the original ordinance drafted, Amanda, that you're modifying here?
So the very original one, I think, was 1972. Is that right, Tim? And then the most recent revision was done in 2018.
I can check to see when it was. I know it was a long time ago.
The, depending on which, yeah. Depending on which provision you're looking at, some of them might have been tweaked over time for other reasons. But I'm pretty sure it was back in the 70s, the 70s or 80s.
So I have a couple of concerns. The one concern that I have is we have a lot of people in the community who have lost housing and who have found themselves in older model RVs. And so the two concerns that I have are that this ordinance, this abandoned vehicle ordinance not be used to impact people's housing. And the second thing I have concern about is that I, all the time, when I'm up in the foothills around McMinnville or in any open space outside of an urban growth boundary, I see old abandoned RVs that have been basically burned and left. And I wonder, is there any coordination possible with the county to deal with removal and disposal of those kinds of vehicles? Because they seem to not only be an eyesore, but also a potential hazard.
I'll address your first question. I might defer to Captain Simons about any coordination with the county. So I completely hear you on wanting to make sure that we're not, you know, we're not creating an additional problem that, you know, people experiencing homelessness are already encountering. One of the issues that we have found in that, so this language, other than what I said, what I added about the permit, which I think actually helps clarify because people can go apply for a permit for their RV to be parked on the right of way. One of the issues that we were having is that people would not have registered their vehicle for, I mean, 10 years. It would be an expired vehicle registration, but they might have insurance on it. And so we wouldn't, so there was a question about whether or not we could enforce. The issue is, is that people can be cited for an unregistered vehicle regardless of whether it's insured or not. It's technically not allowed, it's illegal to have that on the right of way. And frankly, we don't have much enforcement other than writing citations, other than this, as a way to deal with that. So I don't know, Tim, if you want to add on to anything, have anything additional to add to Counselor Peralta's question particularly about the coordination?
Well, as far as the coordination-
Chief Scales.
As far as the coordination is concerned, the Sheriff's Office representative and I have had conversations with local tow companies as far as a disposal of RVs, regardless of their situation. And the unfortunate thing is that due to DEQ requirements, they become cost prohibitive as far as the ability for the dismantling and disposal of the RVs, regardless of the way that they're constituted. Essentially, what it comes down to is that we've identified one, one local tow company who has the capacity and is willing to not only tow, but also store and then dismantle the RVs when they become towed, regardless of the reason that they're being towed for. The issue that we come into with the towing of the RV specifically is that they cost in the neighborhood of $2,500 per RV per occurrence. So as you can imagine, the more that we start to tow, the more cost is associated with the program. So while not necessarily the only decision making point, it is a decision making point as far as the ability, not only that, but then also the space availability as far as the tow company is concerned, to be able to store them until they can get to the point where they can dismantle them.
Thank you. It seems like more of a regional problem with respect to stuff happening outside of the jurisdiction. I appreciate your indulging that question. In terms of our city, what kind of costs are we incurring or would you expect to incur? And do you expect any actual change in policy as a result of these code changes? Or is the policy changing, is the policy essentially, we're changing the code just to make sure that it's consistent with the policy as we're implementing it?
I think that would be an accurate statement to say that we're changing the code to make sure that it is in line with the policy and the practice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Amanda, can I, go ahead, Matt.
Sorry, I wish I could show you my face, but I'm at my house and I'm in a very awkward spot. But I'd like to touch on Counselor Peralta's question regarding exacerbating people's houseless issues through this code amendment. And quite frankly, they're completely, they're separate. They're not one and the same. So as I've mentioned before, and will continue to mention, that our staff works extremely hard in trying to find solutions prior to any sort of disposal of RVs, towed RVs, et cetera. So that's really the last, that's the last thing we want to do. But that being said, these two codes, the code, this one specifically worth reference to the abandoned vehicles and then prohibited camping, they're completely separate. So that's all I'd like to add.
Adam?
Yeah, I guess whoever wants to take it, Tim, Matt or Amanda. But my question is more around, I know the last time of any known toes that I know about, back in August, those were, you know, basically thrown out by the court. And it doesn't seem like we've really towed anything since then. So with this update, will it make that policy available again and be a tool back in the toolbox that's kind of been off limits since then? Or at least that's the perception I've gotten from lack of towing around the city and kind of the hotbed areas we have over off McDaniel and the Wortman Park complex that I hear about from constituents at least weekly?
Yes, Counselor Garvin, that's exactly right. So two particular clarifications came up as a result. One was this insurance issue, whether or not it has to be both either unregistered or have no registration plates and also be uninsured. To staff with the use of the word or, it seemed pretty clear that it's either or, but that's not the way it was interpreted. So we think separating it out will make it that much more clear. And then second of all was the 72-hour rule for parked vehicles versus abandoned vehicles, which are two separate things. And so as we get into another revision that we're proposing, that's to make that abundantly clear as well, that the 72-hour rule applies to vehicles that are not considered abandoned.
Okay, thank you. And then for Tim or Matt, I know before we got this policy in place, the 300-foot rule kind of was a known loophole. And it was just kind of, you guys could chase the same rig 300 feet every three days. Is that, these policy updates aren't going to create a loophole like that to where you guys feel like it's an endless battle with the same user?
I would say that'd be an accurate statement. The intent of this is to make it so that once a vehicle is identified as being abandoned and it meets the criteria of being abandoned, that regardless of whether it's moved or not, it still meets that criteria based off of the definition of the abandoned vehicle code.
Okay, and then this might be more of a Jennifer Jeff question, but back in budget season, we didn't identify any budgeting for towing. We removed that line item from the fiscal year's budget. And so I was just curious, when we as council, if we vote to move forward with these changes, do we have money in the budget to actually enforce these policy changes? Or are updates, are we still at zero on that?
I think Chief Scales is raising his hand to potentially answer that question.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Amanda. And Counselor Garvin, to your question, with respect to the tows, the abandoned vehicle tows, we did leave money in that specific account. So we do have money and have been doing that, the tows. So there's money to cover. And then going back to, with reference to the RV tows, that is a separate account. And no, it was not funded. But as you recall, back when we did approve the budget as it was being ratified, we discussed that we would take a look at where we were internally with our funding and that we could potentially transfer funds in our budget to cover that expense. I believe Tim has some data about where we are at through the year with respect to our veto costs. But we have not, we do not have money. But as council may remember, we did discuss that it was a go and that if money did need to be transferred and it could happen through a resolution.
Captain?
I feel like I've just been put on the spot because I didn't bring that information with me. But that's fine. I believe anecdotally, I think that we've towed three RVs year to date so far. So that would be in the neighborhood of $7,500 that we've expensed thus far from that line item.
Thank you, Tim. Let me ask a question that's outside of a little bit of the bounds of this, but it goes back to what we talked about. We're seeing an increase of, well, what I would call a motor home bus and trailers and RVs on McDaniel Street. And last week, I went to that location every single day and took pictures, and those vehicles are not moving at all. Matter of fact, really of a concern to me was the bus that seemed to have a wood stove in it with a pipe coming out the window and smoke coming out of that at least two days that I went by, that in my mind, has to be illegal unless they've got a firewall, you know, protecting that. Does this changes to Title 10 help us in that kind of situation? As Adam had mentioned, I get daily input about the concerns of that becoming a Marsh Lane or a Dustin Court again. So it's outside of the discussion a little bit, but it gets to the crux of some of the things that we're dealing on a daily basis. And so, Tim or Matt, if you could update us a little bit?
I could take a swing at this. So Mayor Hill, yes, you're correct. In fact, we just had a meeting with staff, city staff this afternoon about specifically this location as I was copied in those emails. You know, candidly, this code, this code is separate from the camping code. That being said, I believe we have, you know, with the departure of Amy Kepler and the parking enforcement for the last couple, two or three weeks, that's led to this. And candidly, it is just a reminder to our staff and us that, you know, even a three to four week delay in going out and having people check on these, this is what exacerbates that problem. So we need to be mindful. I know I've talked to staff this afternoon and we're going to make a conservative effort to have Tim Height, Officer Height, who is the liaison and has liaison for years with them, continue to go out there. He's been pulled a majority of the time through some other job activities through the schools. But that being said, it will be and has been made a priority to make sure that we are addressing this on a daily basis. So we don't, like you had mentioned, revert back to what we were dealing with in 2018 up on Marsh, Dustin and Fortin Adams. So very mindful like you are.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Because again, I think it's a perception, if a few of them get away with it, then it grows and it becomes a eyesore. And again, I think, you know, Sal's concern of homelessness. But we do have an ordinance that truly addresses where you can go during the day. Because I see so many RVs down in Wortman Park. Joe Dance are not being open now. But we need to have compliance or people will take control of the public right of ways. So thank you for addressing that.
Yeah, and I'll just add, Mayor Hill, sorry. I'll just add, Mayor Hill, that because of some of these clarification issues, my understanding is that the police department has not been relying, to the extent it would use the abandoned vehicle provisions, it has not been relying on that until we got these clarifications done. That does still mean that the camping ordinance is a tool in the toolbox. But as Chief Scales indicated, these are last resorts when, after several attempts to gain compliance, we, in the meeting today, we had YCAT, a YCAT representative there to again, talk about what resources can we make sure individuals are aware of and, you know, so that way, when we, when staff are in contact with individuals, that we are providing resources and information and education before any enforcement mechanism occurs. But I do want to note that this particular provision regarding abandoned vehicles, to my understanding, has not been utilized probably since August in anticipation of these clarifications occurring.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other questions? Adam?
Just to your point, Mayor, one of the, that bus you mentioned with the wood stove did have a vehicle fire dispatched to it today at 2:00. And that would be my other concern is if this was allowed to grow back into Marsh or Dustin Lane type experiences, the drain that puts on our limited resources in the public safety sector on police and fire and mental health people when they are dispatched to that. And then they have another bigger call going on. So, you know, thankfully, there wasn't a structured fire dispatch at the same time. But if we had our paid engine one on a vehicle fire that turned out to not really be a full-blown vehicle fire, it was just a guy starting this wood stove inside the bus that created a lot of smoke, we would have had delayed response time to a structured fire. So I think just from a public safety standpoint, it's prudent that we stay on top of these issues.
Thank you for that update, Adam. Chris?
I'd just like to echo everything that's been said so far and just add to it that I don't think we want it to be if it were to come back to another Marsh Lane, Dustin Court. We need to be proactive and prevent that from happening again. I think all of us remember the stress that that created throughout the community. And I don't think that was good for anybody, those experiencing homelessness or those throughout the rest of the community. So it's a safety concern and it's a health concern. And we just don't want to get back to that again.
Thank you, Chris, for those insights. The other piece that is of concern to me is that these vehicles tend to outgrow the inside of their vehicle. And there are numerous piles of, well, their collection of stuff outside. And the few that do move, they just leave their garbage in garbage bags and it puts a strain on street maintenance, park maintenance also. Other comments? Seeing none. Then Amanda, have we had a good enough discussion? Do you feel comfortable where we're sitting right now?
Well, for that first one, yes. I'll move on to the next provision. Yeah, definitely, thank you. It's really helpful to flush out these issues. And that's why it's really important for me to make sure that we go through all the proposed changes so council understands what the proposed changes really mean. So the next proposed change is- next proposed change is, um, getting into, so the first one we dealt with was the definition of abandoned vehicle. The next cha, proposed change is where we are codifying that having an abandoned vehicle is a prohibition. And so it's already in our code. Again, it's an under ten point two eight point zero eight zero E. What we're clarifying, um, is the twenty-four hour, um, notice requirement. And, um, to essentially say that, that there was a kind of a, a confusion about when we talk about the timeframes. So again, if you remember back to the definition, it's you've been parked for twenty-four hours and one of these conditions exists. So let's say you've been parked for twenty-four, at least twenty-four hours, and you don't have, um, valid registration. What this is then saying is it can be tagged for tow, which is the notice, and that has to be up for twenty-four hours. That's under state statute, that's required, and then it can be towed. So this is just further clarifying, um, that the notice requirement that it's twenty, it can be tagged for tow immediately after that twenty-four hours plus the qualifying condition of the definition. So it gets tagged, and then twenty-four hours later is when it can be towed if it hasn't been, if the issue hasn't been rectified. So, um, the subsection F, what I did, um, I, that also was part of, was, um, that subsection F is codifying the seventy-two hour rule, which as you might remember, which we're gonna get into in the next slide, is about vehicles that are, do not meet the definition of abandoned, but are parked in the same spot for seventy-two hours. So again, it's creating that distinction between what is an abandoned vehicle, what is the abandoned vehicle timeframes, and then a vehicle that's simply parked for a certain amount of time, but is otherwise, you know, has valid license registration, is operable, all those kind of things. It has other regulations that apply, and those are in ten point two eight point zero nine zero. So again, just creating that distinction. So there's not, um, confusion about the seventy-two hours versus the twenty-four hour notice period for abandoned vehicles. So is there any questions? Um, it might also be helpful if I switch over to O nine O, so you all can see that language, and then maybe we can talk about it jointly. Um, so O nine O, again, clarifies what I added at the beginning was distinguishing abandoned vehicles and then the recreational vehicles that have the, are part of the recreational vehicle permit program. So again, they have authorization to be on the right of way. So it's saying, other than those two types of vehicles, any other vehicle cannot be, cannot remain on the public street for more than seventy-two hours in the same spot. And so then it's considered stored for the purposes of what I just referred to here under subsection F. So we're just trying to make it abundantly clear to people who own vehicles in the city and to city staff and to whoever who has to enforce this, that there are two different types of vehicles that we're talking about here, abandoned vehicles, and then vehicles who are simply, that are simply just parked for an extended period of time. So, um, again, this was already in there. We're just trying to make it clearer for the public. Um, are there any questions about the zero eight zero and the zero nine zero?
I see no hands raised.
All right. And then the last thing, this actually did not exist in our code, um, which also created some confusion. And, um, I think this will help clarify the process for individuals who may have their vehicles towed. So ORS eight one nine one nine zero lays out the process for when a tow occurs. And so that's where we talk about notice and the twenty-four hours that are required. And then it says that, um, a jurisdiction has to provide a hearing, um, within a certain amount of time if, if it's requested. And, and it has to be requested within a certain amount of time. But then when we went to our local code, there was nothing that said what that hearing process looks like. And so it made sense to staff that we, that we need to put something in our code that explains what the hearing process is. Thankfully, we already have a hearing process in place in our code for code violations, which this, that's what this is. It's, it's a code, essentially it's a code enforcement action. And so what we simply did was refer to the same code violation appeal process that already exists in our code for other code violations as the same process that would apply to this hearing, with the exception of the notice require, or the re, time period for requesting a hearing, because the five-day, um, period is that, that's in statute. So that's the only distinction between the current process and this process is the five days. Um, so basically, this is the only thing that's essentially added that did not exist before. So if there's any questions about the hearing process, um, I'm, we're happy to answer questions about that.
Any questions for Amanda? I don't see any Amanda, so we can move on.
Okay, so the last thing is next steps. Um, so, um, if there's any further revisions or clarifications that counselors, um, you know, particularly as you're sort of sitting back and absorbing all this and you think are needed, we're happy to work through those, um, with the counselors. We anticipate, you know, barring some, you know, major issue that a counselor has flagged, we're planning to bring an ordinance to council for consideration in January. And I also wanted to note, um, because we have talked a little bit about camping, um, so council's likely aware that, um, House Bill thirty-one fifteen, um, addresses camping and how jurisdictions need to look at their codes and, and potentially make some revisions to make sure that they're compliant with House Bill thirty-one fifteen. So what that bill essentially said was, we have to have reasonable, um, time, place, manner regulations. It essentially codifies the Martin v Boise decision, though they're, the language isn't exactly the same. That bill is not, is not related to abandoned vehicles. That's about camping. And that bill, um, goes into effect July one, twenty twenty-three. So staff is planning to address that bill separately, um, as part of its camping ordinance review, um, as that, as part of a plan to make sure that we're compliant starting July one, twenty twenty-three with that bill. Um, but that's not part of this process. So I just wanna make it clear to council that, that we will be reviewing that. That will come back to council for discussion, um, separate from the abandoned vehicle code. So, um, are there any questions about our next steps or anything that counselors otherwise have? I'll, I'll stop sharing my screen. So if there's further discussion you wanna have, um, we can see each other.
So let's go ahead. Anyone having, uh, questions or comments? Not seen any, anything. Um, any, go, go ahead, uh, Remy.
Okay, so sorry it took me a moment to get, um, unmuted. Um, I, I just wanna say that I, I think with some of the conversation we've had tonight in conjunction with this and something that we've talked about in terms of our, our long-term planning, having, um, additional resources for people that can really be, um, first responders in, in, um, instances where it might be, uh, confusing or unclear if a person is camping versus an abandoned vehicle. And the more lift that we can also take off of our police department in the long run, well, I think the, the combination of that, um, uh, with this will be a more, even more winning solution for our city.
I would agree, Remy. Other comments? Seeing none. Uh, Amanda, any, anything that you'd like to conclude with this evening?
No, um, I, I appreciate the council's, um, discussion on the matter. And also thank you to Captain Simons and Chief Scales and the police department, um, in working with me in addressing some of these issues.
Okay, well, uh, I will then adjourn our work session meeting at six forty this eve. Uh, or Matt, your, your hand is up.
Yeah, I don't wanna, uh, I wanna pass our thanks to City Attorney as well. Uh, she did the lion's share of the code work, obviously revisions. She's a, a rock star when it comes to that. So thank you, uh, to you and your staff for that assist.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks, Amanda. Absolutely. Well, I'll go ahead and adjourn the work session meeting tonight at six forty. We will reconvene at seven o'clock on this same Zoom, uh, location. So thank you. Well, it is seven o'clock, and we'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council meeting, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we will go ahead and have a roll call, and I call this meeting to order. Claudia?
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Here. Merry Christmas.
Counselor Minky?
Merry Christmas and here.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, Merry Christmas to all and here.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Counsel President Drabkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here, and happy holidays to everyone. Um, let's go ahead and move forward with the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Kelly, would you lead us this evening in the pledge?
Okey dokey. Uh, all right, I'll stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, we have a ceremony this evening, and so I will call on, uh, Police Chief Matt Scales to present a life-saving award. So Chief?
Uh, I'm going to defer to Captain Simons, who's there at Civic Hall tonight. Unfortunately, I could not be there.
Okay. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have Officer Justin Brenner here with me. Can you hear me okay through the mask?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, hopefully I'll be able to see through my fogged up glasses when I breathe. So, uh, if you, if you can't hear me, or if, if I have to stop too much, I apologize, uh, and I'll try to speak up as much as I can. Uh, we're here tonight to, uh, recognize and honor Just, Officer Justin Brenner for his, uh, acts, uh, for, uh, obtaining the life-saving award. On Saturday, June fifth, twenty twenty-one, at about four twenty-nine PM, a shooting call was received by YCOM and dispatched to McMinnville units. The initial call was that the caller heard a gunshot, but it was unknown if the person had been shot. Uh, Officer Justin Brenner arrived in the area and found a male victim at nine thirty-eight Northeast Second Street, laying in the dirt between some concrete steps and the house foundation. The victim was laying in a rapidly growing puddle of blood. Officer Brenner applied a tourniquet to the victim's upper thigh. Due to the amount of blood and dirt, Officer Brenner was unable to immediately pinpoint the gunshot wound. Officer Brenner cut the victim's jeans and still was unable to identify the wound and applied a second tourniquet, uh, as high on the victim's thigh as possible, stopping the active bleed. Uh, information was later learned that the gunshot had partially severed the victim's femoral artery. The victim had required a blood transfusion prior to being lifelighted to Portland. Uh, medics and hospital staff both stated that the victim would have died, uh, but if, if not for the tourniquets that were applied by Officer Brenner. Uh, in recognition of his immediate and purposeful actions that were successful in saving the victim's life, he is being awarded the McMinnville Police Department's Life Saving Award. Congratulations, Justin.
Thank you.
Give this to you here and...
Congratulations, Justin, on behalf of the City Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your life-saving efforts and the success that, uh, came from that. Again, uh, we are so proud of our, our, our first responders in the city and them always going up and beyond. So again, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It's very humbling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel?
Thank you, Chief, and Captain. Well, this takes us to that part of our agenda this evening where we're taking comments from community members. Um, anyone may address the council and speak on the topic other than a matter of litigation, quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Uh, you're given the opportunity to speak to the council for three minutes. Please, uh, identify yourself with name and address. Um, you can raise your hand in the, um, Zoom feature. And, uh, so I'll turn it over to Claudia. Do we have anyone signed up to address us this evening, Claudia?
Mayor and counsel, we do not have anyone here.
Thank you, Claudia. Well, that takes us to a public hearing that we're holding this evening, a public hear, hearing to consider Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-eight, adopting findings by the Contract Review Board to engage in a contract management, general contractor procurement method for the navigation centered project. I'll ask if there's any member of the council that needs to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves from this, uh, uh, this proceedings. Seeing none, then we'll call on, um, Planning Director Heather Richards to present.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Um, is this a public hearing to consider an alternative contracting method for the navigation center? I'm gonna walk you through the findings for that. Resolution number twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash fifty-eight adopts those findings in your, um, provision as the contract review board. So I'll walk you through those. I'm gonna share my screen. I've had some difficulty today with sharing my screen, so hopefully this will work this evening.
It's looking great, Heather, so.
Okay, great. Um, so we are looking at an alternative method, which is called a construction manager, general contractor procurement method. We're looking at it for very specific reasons due to the complexity of this project. Um, we're gonna review the statutory requirements associated with this. We're gonna review the findings, and then you'll conduct the public hearing and hear public testimony. And then after that, uh, consider voting on Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-eight. I wanted to let you know, we're putting this together as a potential path, um, to move this project forward. We're still doing some due diligence on our end as to, um, whether this is the best path, but we want to have it available to us. And we'll walk through the findings for you why we think it's the best path. Uh, McMinnville was awarded a one point five million dollar grant from the state to develop and operate a navigation center. Uh, House Bill two thousand and six, which passed through the legislative session this year, describes what a navigation center is. It's a low-barrier shelter, open twenty-four hours, seven days a week, with onsite supportive services. The city is partnering with YCAP to manage and operate the navigation center. The project specifics is we're looking at rehabilitating two existing structures that are on contiguous parcels with each other and connecting them, combining those two parcels and connecting those two structures with new construction to make one large structure. The two structures are located on complex topographical parcels that are adjacent to each other and are on different levels of topography, which adds some complexity to the project. And then the sites themselves have a steep slope and there is soil instability. We suspect there's soil instability on those parcels. This meets in terms of your city council strategies, this meets two of your goals, uh, city government capacity, so strengthening the city's ability to prioritize and deliver municipal services with discipline and focus. The objective that being develop and foster local and regional partnerships. And this is a local partnership with YCAP to serve a regional need, so a homeless shelter. And then identifying strategies and venues to improve opportunities for access to regional and state resources is the action. And that's the discussion of the one point five million dollar grant from the state. And I neglected to mention that, uh, we worked with Representative Noble's office for a couple of years to secure that grant, and he was able to do so for us. So we're very thankful to him for that. The second goal this achieves under your city council strategies is housing opportunities, creating diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods, and collaborating to improve the financial feasibility of diverse housing development opportunities. And the action for this that's in your adopted plan is to collaborate with the governor's out office for housing development. And these funds are coming directly from the governor's office. So there's several different procurement processes that we can, um, uh, proceed with in terms of, uh, managing this project and the construction piece of it. We're looking at three tonight, design bid build, what we call design bid build versus construction manager versus design build. Design bid build is your traditional bidding process. Design, bid, build is your traditional bidding process where we put together the architectural construction documents and then we go out for a bid and the low bid wins and we move forward with the development process. And you can see that we have knowledge of what the final costs are after we've invested in all this pre-development and architectural work to get there. Sometimes with this, there's a potential conflict between the design and the construction. Then it could lead to change orders and you need confidence in your design upfront to avoid those change orders. And the owner manages the project. It's a very linear process, which could add some time to the overall project itself as well. Then there's a design, build process. In the design, build process, you're getting to a final cost earlier on in the process itself. This GMP is a guaranteed maximum price. And so we get a guaranteed maximum price at this time and then we continue to do value engineering and we can come in with a project underneath that price. But we know where the city sits in terms of the maximum price into the project. We hire a team, both a designer and a contractor based on qualifications. So we go out with an RFQ for those two pieces. They come back together as a team. And we have less design control as we're going through this process. However, the timeline is an early completion. And then the last one is Construction Manager General Contractors. So this is similar to the design, build process where you get the final cost as a guaranteed maximum price during the design process itself. But what's different about this is the city is hiring both the construction manager and also the designer, who are both reporting to the city rather than those two working as a team together. And that duality of the triangle is creating this opportunity for efficiencies and for bringing different skill sets to the table to really look at value engineering and constructability going through the design process itself. It's really good for complex projects where you want that contractor involved upfront so they can talk about whether or not what's being designed is actually achievable on the ground in a cost-effective manner. So the construction manager is part of the design process. You're paying for the time of the construction manager in this process, but usually it's offset by the cost savings that occurs in their collaboration with the designers, especially in these complex projects. It allows for the city to control the design. It allows for public process. And the construction occurs concurrently with the design. So you see here where construction starts, you can start moving forward with construction as you're going through the design process itself, so it can speed up the time. The two elements for the city to consider is we are working under a timeframe in terms of getting this project operational by June 30, 2022. And we don't have an internal project manager with capacity to manage this construction project ourselves. So we would be looking at securing a project manager, a third-party project manager anyways. And this would be the opportunity to invest in the Construction Manager General Contractor process. So the project, in terms of the CMGC, which is what we call it, the project team consists of three components. The city, a contract with a designer, and then a two-phase contract with a general contractor. So Phase One is that construction management piece where they're helping out with the design and they're contracting to help out with the design. And then Phase Two is they're building the project. And so this is how that whole process works in terms of our relationship, which would be owner up here, the design piece, which is right here, and the construction piece, which is right here. So these two are independent pieces, but they're hired at the same time and they work together. So they're contractually coordinating together in terms of that design piece. So the reasons why we're recommending the CMGC for this project is the constructibility of the designs due to the complexity of the site. It also brings us timely cost information. We are working with a limited budget. We want to make sure we're achieving within that budget. It gives us cost certainty because we'll get to a guaranteed maximum price fairly early in the process. It typically leads to faster schedules. It allows owner input into the design decisions and there's a team atmosphere. So and the owner in this case would be probably YCAP and the city working together as operators in financial portal for the project. In terms of statutory compliance, we are governed for procurement for public improvement projects under which this one would fall. And we're governed by ORS 279C, which governs public agencies. It requires a competitive bidding process. So the whole premise behind public procurement is we're bringing the best price for the project into the community to build the best project for the community. That's the intention. ORS 279C.335 governs how to consider alternative contracting methods to achieve that intention. And that means any method that doesn't use that traditional design, bid, build method that we talked about in the beginning, where the award is based solely on the price of building the project. So there's two statutory tests, ORS 279C.330 and ORS 279C.335 subset two. These are the different elements that we need to look at for both of those tests. And this is what's written up in your findings document. That's an exhibit of the resolution. ORS 279C.335 subset two looks at favoritism and cost savings to the public. So it wants to make sure it's discouraging favoritism and bringing cost savings to the public. In this case, we'll have a competitive RFP process for the CMGC and the design. So that will allow for that competitiveness. There will be objective selection criteria in the formal selection process. And then the CMGC will be required to ensure fair and open competition for subcontractors. The cost savings to the public is it allows that constructibility feedback based on the site conditions during the design phase. There's value engineering taking place between the designer and the contractor. And then you have a guaranteed maximum price, which avoids the change orders. ORS 279C.330 has several different checkpoints. So we were looking at, we have to identify what the operational budget is for the public improvement and operational being the construction piece of it with the design. We've identified $900,000 to $1 million and setting aside $500,000 for operations of the facility. The public benefit is that there's cost savings and it's bringing a homeless shelter, a little barrier homeless shelter to McMinnville, which we currently do not have. Value engineering allows, the process allows for value engineering during design. Specialized expertise required. There's site complexity and topo issues on the site. So having a contractor onboard at the beginning will help us with what's actually constructible. And then market conditions, it will save time to combat increasing costs. I'm sure you're all aware that construction costs are rising exponentially monthly at this point in time and supply chain is an issue. And then the other elements as well. And those are all described in your finding documents, too. So the resolution itself adopts the findings to allow the city to move forward with the CMGC procurement process, which is a recommendation from staff for this project. Are there any questions about that? Okay, so at that, I'm going to stop sharing and let you conduct the public hearing.
Thank you, Heather, for that, that report to us. So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing for comments. Anyone would like to comment on the topic that we just went over, the Construction Management General Contractor Procurement Method? Again, I will call for public comment. Seeing none, then I'll call on Claudia to see if anyone has signed up for comments from the public. Claudia?
Mayor and counsel, no one has signed up and I don't see anyone raise their hand via Zoom.
Okay, I will take any further or last comments from counsel. Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, I was curious where this is going to be located at. I mean, it just seems like we're going into the blind to make this decision when we as council, as far as I understand, I haven't been able to find it anywhere in our packet of what site we're talking about waiving the competitive bid process and going to this other process.
I'll go ahead and address that. And then Amanda can jump in or Heather. YCAP has a location right now that they have kept in that, you know, we don't have a contract per se with YCAP. We're going through this process. They don't want to disclose the address at this particular time because it's being used in a manner where they're giving services out and they don't want to make that public. And so, Adam, I understand that, you know, as we go through this process and as I think we complete the contract, that address will become available for the council. So Amanda, does that address our concerns or Heather?
I'm not sure I'm prepared to answer that question right at this moment. So if Heather has an answer, I'm happy to defer to her at the moment.
So Mayor, that's correct. It is two sites that YCAP currently owns. It's on 99 on Adams. And we are not in a place where we have a secure contract for the project there yet, but we're working towards that right now. It looks like that's the, we'll be successful with that. And so that's why we wanted to get this in front of you in December so that in January, when everything's secure, we can start moving forward with the procurement process since we are looking towards a June 30 deadline.
Thank you, Heather. Again, I don't know if that completely answers your question, Adam. But again, it is on 99 and it is, it's a location that's visible, but it's not visible as a, as a kind of transitional center at this particular time. Let's go up.
Yeah, and I understand the reason for not making it public. It just seems like maybe we would have been briefed in an executive session if we're going to be asked to make these kinds of decisions, if they wanted to keep that suppressed for the time being. So philosophically, it just seems hard to make this type of decision and circumvent the competitive bid process when we don't really even know what sites we're talking about. I'm definitely not against the Navigation Center. I personally would have liked to see a collaboration of two not-in-my-backyard-type outfits of a Bottle Drop and a Navigation Center collaborating on a site and maybe Bottle Drop paying the Navigation Center a long-term lease to put both those spots in one area where you could, you know, have, I would say, a high probability of the Bottle Drop users eventually maybe going over and utilizing the services of the Navigation Center. And they would complement one another and then you'd have two not-in-my-backyard issues solved in one site location. But the process for this Navigation Center has been lacking transparency, for lack of a better term.
Thank you for those comments. Let's go to Zach.
Thank you. Love the plug for the Bottle Drop. I was trying to figure out how we can get that out of the community. The, two questions actually I had have been sort of touched on in responses by Mr. Mayor and Heather. First question was, is there or does there need to be or will there be contractual working agreement or some more stringent agreement between us and YCAP as we move forward in this or no? Or will there need to be and at what point will there be?
So there will need to be a contract between the city and YCAP as we work through the construction process since we are the fiscal agent for the grant funds and will be funding the project. It is on YCAP property. And in terms of transparency, YCAP didn't say, don't disclose where it is. The issue is, it's not, it's not a done deal for that site. And sites that are identified for these types of uses have been receiving a lot of negative attention and targeting. And so that was the concern, but it's on Adams. I'm happy to share it if people really want it to be shared. And I want the community to know we're still working through the due diligence for that. We haven't had the opportunity to visit with neighbors about the proposed project. And I forgot the second half of your question, Counselor Geary.
I haven't got there yet.
Oh.
That was the first question, one for one. The second question was, let's see, that was working agreement. And the second question was, I guess, back to you, Director Richards. You had talked about a timeline. I think the nature of this is, you know, being in the industry, but not this type of project. The way you laid out is 100%, yeah, I think the better way to go on a lot of projects, especially as complex and complicated mysterious during the process as these can be. So I agree with that. But the timeline, what are we, are we on a timeline? I know grants come with certain things and if I missed it, I'm sorry. But I think, are we on a compressed timeline? And what do we got to do and when? And how feasible is that overall, even if you were to go today, you know?
We're on a compressed timeline. We have to show operations by June 30, 2022. So knowing the construction industry, that's six months. That's going to be tough to pull off. But we do feel with the two existing structures, so the way it's being discussed right now and designed is to do it in phases and to have a portion of the existing structure, one of the existing structures in operations by June 30, 2022 and phasing the construction in such a way where we can still be constructing on site to finish the project after that. We don't think, that's in the House bill, our actual grant agreement that we received from the state doesn't have that deadline in it. So I don't think that there's that legal obligation. But they're definitely, we want to be respectful to Representative Noble, who worked with the committee that was putting the House bill together to secure the funds for the city that were working towards those deadlines in the House bill.
You say the phrasing on that threshold again that needs to be met by June 30th, 2022. What was it, operational? Just, what was it?
Operational, but it doesn't say at what degree or how big or anything of that nature in terms of operational.
Okay. Good luck. That's exciting. This stresses me out. Okay, cool. Those are my two questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Kelly.
Okay, good. Scott, my apologies here. I'm thinking of the bypass and the way they have constructed it in the past. It's kind of a design, build, which I'm assuming is a little bit along the same lines as what they're trying to do here. Or am I totally incorrect in that? It seems a very efficient method of doing it.
Yeah, I mean, our partner with the bypass has been ODOT and we follow their rules. But the same thing, we'll go up to the design and then we go to a quality review once we've come together on the design and then try to further delineate the total cost from that perspective. And so.
You're basically combining the engineering with the design.
Yes.
It is much more efficient. So it's a good path to go. It really is.
Most, ODOT does use CMGC on their bigger, complex projects and most schools use CMGC procurement processes on their projects.
Thank you, Kelly.
That's all I have to say.
Let's go to Chris.
First, in terms of the general recommendation to move to this approach to contracting this out, I lean on Counselor Geary's expertise. And if he says this is the best way to go about it, then I'm going to trust him and agree with that. But I also agree with Counselor Garvin that asking us to sign off on this and approve this without even telling us where this is located seems, it just philosophically doesn't feel right. It feels less than transparent. I mean, again, as he said, we could have had this handled in an executive meeting if we needed to keep it private for any reason. There's, to keep the council, who is put in the position of making this decision out of the loop and not tell us where this is going to be located, just kind of puts me at a bad taste in my mouth, to be quite frank.
Thanks for those comments, Chris. Let's go to Council President Drapkin, Remy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and especially those that have expressed discontent with the process, I think I'd like to take a moment just to kind of expand a little bit on the process to date, and, and maybe add some reason behind that, and go back to what Heather said, which is, I think that if, I, and I certainly don't want to put words in her mouth, but I believe that if she had anticipated, you know, this much problem over this particular point of the location, that aside from executive session, I would put out that this also is a question that could have been directed to staff ahead of time, and you would have received an answer not in a public meeting. And I would like to remind all of you about the targeting that has repeatedly happened when we've talked about different types of sites for different uses, and additionally talk about a lot of the, really just made-up things that have been spread throughout the last number of years through the community, misconstruing the term low-barrier shelter, and social media leading however many members of our community to believe that that was some sort of, you know, tent with cement blocks around it, as opposed to the, the real intent. So I think, this might sound defensive, but I don't want it to, I actually really want you to understand that there were years advocating for this money for this project, it passed the House, and then there was no direction on how the money that could, could be used for months. And so, as much as planning has tried to happen in advance, there, there was a limitation to how much planning could be done, other than just alerting partners and saying, you know, we want to be prepared for this, but we don't know what we're going to be allowed to do and not to do, and how this money can be used. And as soon as we got that direction, our planning director pulled together a work group, had a meeting with great frequency, including service partners, including the county, and really trying to be very smart, thorough, and thoughtful. And that group is still meeting regularly, and I would say that if any counselor had wanted to join any of those meetings, that, that would have been fine, they're not, they're not, you know, the, there's, the idea that there was some sort of secrecy as opposed to being protective of those who are currently receiving services based on past history, and trying to move this project with the speed that it required, because we got direction on how the money could be used in, I think it was late August, with, as Director Richards said, this deadline of June 2022. So, you know, I, I would prefer to carry that, the, that burden of saying that the, if, if you need to point a finger at somebody and say that there hasn't been enough transparency, I would prefer you point that finger at me than the members of our staff who have done an incredible job at moving this project forward with the speed that it needs, and an incredible amount of work with the House, and especially Representative Noble, it has not been a small effort to get the project to this point. And I'm sure the, those of us on council that are aware of the location would be happy to, to talk with members of council afterwards as well, and being sure, of course, we don't violate any public meeting laws. And, and thank you to staff for working so hard on this, and bringing a number of creative ways and solutions to the table for how we can actually meet this deadline and exercise this huge influx of cash to address a problem that is affecting, as we've already talked about tonight, all members of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Kelly?
Yeah, I would like to reiterate what Remy has said, staff has done a phenomenal job on this, and pulled together information, and all sorts of possible sites, things like that, this has been, this particular one seems to be the best one, one we can handle most rapidly, so, and certainly anyone who was interested in it could have attended meetings.
Other comments?
Thank you again, staff, you are all fabulous.
Adam?
Yeah, I was curious where those meetings were noticed, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that those meetings were taking place in a public, public setting.
I'm sure that I've brought up several times in meetings that here discussing the Navigation Center, no one has ever asked me anything about it, I've just not been terribly interested.
I, I have had conversations with Council President Drapkin about the location of it, and have never been granted that information.
Remy, if you wanted to reply to that, and then we'll go to Sal.
Counselor Garvin, I feel like that's a little deconstruction of, of reality, my line is always open to you, and I don't believe I've ever denied you access to that information, so I'm, I'm not sure why our conversation is focused on this transparency issue. Everybody that's been involved in the process is absolutely happy to talk with the counselors who seem discontent, and, and I would, I would love if we could keep our meeting focused on the issue at hand, which is this, this, this tool that we would like council to consider in order to help move this project forward.
Let's go over to Sal.
Sal? I agree that the, the context of not having the full information is less than ideal, but I also agree that this is a critical project for our community, and there are deadlines that we need to hit. I think I have a general idea of, of where this is likely to come in, and I, I support the project. We, we need to address homelessness in the community, and this Navigation Center is an important first step. We were, I'm very grateful to Representative Noble and to our staff for getting the funding, and are very supportive for us to move the project forward. I think that there is definitely a rational basis for, you know, at least being circumspect about, you know, the site locations until they've actually been finalized for sure, and at the point where they are finalized, I think it's also important that they do a, a full and thorough job in getting community feedback on those locations, but in the meantime, I think we need to keep moving forward.
Thank you, Sal. I'd also like to call out YCAP for their partnership in this. It's, again, they have a location, and they've been doing good work at this, this is expanding that, I don't know that they were looking for that, we had the opportunity with those dollars coming in that could enhance their program, and it fits right in line with the intent of the bill. So I, I have an opportunity to meet with, with YCAP on a monthly basis, and I can just tell you that, you know, in lieu of not having a signed contract, much work and effort has been placed into preparing for where we're at today, and I know Kelly could address that as a board member of YCAP. We've put tremendous time into this process, again, as a committee, and as YCAP is working from their end to see the functionality of this coming together.
And Mayor, if I can just follow up, it might be that I didn't provide enough contextual background, so, House Bill 2006 removes all land use processes from the side of this type of facility, and the reason for that is that it, it just was becoming impossible to cite these types of facilities across the state due to the NIMBYism associated with them, and I, from what I understand here in McMinnville, that was a big issue with the Gospel Rescue Mission. So the land use piece has been taken out of it entirely. The reason why there's a, it's not a legal issue, it's a sensitivity issue of not, not putting the site into the documents that you have before you tonight, is because we don't have a contract with YCAP for that site yet. We're working through that right now, but we do have concurrent processes that we're trying to put into place, you meet once, once in December, we want to get this in front of you, so that there would be the ability to start putting the background work into moving this process forward for when we do have that contract with YCAP signed. There will be a phase when we come forward to you with the CMGC contract that will have the site associated with it, so what we're asking for, from you tonight, is a process that we can start putting together and moving forward, then we will bring a contract to you, full disclosure in a public meeting, that, that shares who the CMGC is, where the site is located, and we'll have, also have the contract with YCAP at that time. And so, that, that's the next step. There's a lot, I don't think council understands just how much staff responds on a daily basis to community concerns about locations of services serving homeless people in our community, and it creates a lot of chaos for both staff and the providers, some of it necessary, some of it very unnecessary, fear-based, and so we want to be able to have the time to, this time right now, to put these pieces in place, to be able to get the project structured, to be able to move forward and meet deadlines, than to be doing that responsive work. We're, we're putting together a game plan for how to visit with the neighbors, once it's all been secured that this is a site we're going to go with, we're going, we're putting a game plan in place on how to message this into the community as well.
Thank you for that additional information, Heather. Chris?
First, I want to say, because I don't want it to come across like I'm, I'm, I am impugning our staff, that's, that's not my intent, and, and not why I'm saying this makes me uncomfortable. It, it doesn't matter, all the reasons you've given, I'm still uncomfortable with, with coming to a vote without knowing where this is going to be. And, and to, we had an executive session right before this meeting, this could have been brought to us so we knew what it was, and it wasn't. That's troubling to me. The fact that your, your argument for why you don't want to bring it to us is you're afraid of how the public's going to respond, is even more troubling to me, because it is the people of McMinnville that we're trying to serve and represent, and their response is something we need to have anyways. So, all of this is kind of, it doesn't lead, it's not leading me to feel any better about this decision-making process. As to the comment, just, hold on, I'm almost done, as to the comment about targeting, using that terminology, I know some of what happened in the past has been misinformation, and I get that, but that's a pejorative, and it, it's, for those that live in the neighborhoods where some of the events have taken place in the past, they weren't targeting, they were expressing what they were experiencing. And so, I, I think we have to be careful with the kind of language that we're using as we discuss the decision-making that we're, we're doing, and, and I, I hope I'm being clear in what I'm trying to say here, but it's just, it's just, all of this is kind of, the way this is being handled says to me we don't trust our community, we don't trust the counselors to listen and understand and make decisions without full information, and I understand you're going to come forward with, with more information at the, at the next level, but I've seen in the past where, at the last second, we're getting information, and the community's getting information, too close to the decision-making process to have meaningful input. I don't want to see that happen through this process.
Yeah, so, and I apologize if I was inferring that we don't trust the community or the city councilors, what I was trying to, to share was, we don't have a contractually-secured site, and, and that's a concern, and until we have that contractually-secured site, it didn't feel appropriate to bring it forward in a venue like this, because of all the other nuances associated with that. It, there is, there is time and effort that goes into responding to the community's concerns, and their valid concerns, once a site is announced, and so we want to make sure we have the contractually-secured site before we do that process, and that's what I was trying to convey, so I apologize if it wasn't too adequate.
Sal?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I feel like the concerns that people have raised have been raised, I mean, I think we've gone through them, and I've certainly heard the concerns tonight. I still think we need to move forward with the project, I feel like we have enough information to move forward with the project, and I would hate to see us get delayed in a way that might prevent us from getting the full allocation on the time scale that the legislature's set up, so whatever we need to do to move this forward, I would be in favor of, and try and get to the rest of the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Sal. Any other comments?
What Sal said.
Okay, any other comments? Not seen any, then I will close our public hearing. Thank you for that good discussion. That takes us to advice and informational items this evening, reports from the counselors on committee and board assignments, and I'm just going to go across, Sal, I'll start with you.
Sorry, I was having a hard time getting to my report page and the unmute button because multitasking is beyond me. Okay, so COG report, actually, usually I give a very brief report on the council of governments, but I'm going to share a little bit more than I usually do, just because we're, we're at the end of the year now. So the current, so as most of you know, the Mid-Wilhelam Valley Council of Governments is, I'm chair of it this year, I'll be chair of it again next year, based on the decision of the, the group today, but the, but the organizational role is to promote economic development, primarily transportation, housing, and then grant assistance to, to local governments and other entities. So right now, the COG is just completing $1.3 million in grant applications and, and management for the cities of Amity and Willamina on wastewater and sewer infrastructure, $500,000 for manufactured housing rehabilitation in Marion County, $2 million for transportation projects in the Salem-Kaiser Transportation Districts. It's one of two entities that's taking the lead in Saniam Canyon redevelopment from the fires, along with Marion County, assisting with the planning in that area, we just hired a wildfire recovery specialist through a public-private partnership with Pacific Power, and we're completing the water and sewer infrastructure analysis for North Saniam Gates in Detroit. Currently, the entity is working on 80 regional ARPA projects, and have received numerous requests from local governments to help with grant administration and grant writing. In addition, they're, they're providing planning services to 22 local jurisdictions, including the city of McMinnville. And as a result of all of this throughput work this year, the Legislative Committee and the Executive Committee at Council of Governments voted to prioritize transportation, grant administration, and getting the mid-valley local governments positioned to maximize the federal funding that's coming through the pipeline. So in 2022, we'll be increasing capacity in the Planning Department, grant writing, and grant administration to provide those enhanced services to local jurisdictions like McMinnville, and then also supporting the enhanced role of MWAAC in state transportation planning, in hopes that we can get the Newburgh-Dundee bypass and some of the other projects that are high priority in the region through. The only other thing for McMinnville is that we're currently taking applications for the regional government awards that we give at our annual meeting, which is going to be in February this year, and the awards that we do are for regional leadership, professional service, and a regional cooperative project, so I would encourage staff to take a look at some of the projects we've been working on, or people who have done exceptional work, and put names forward, the most recent COG connections has the link for that. Yeah, that's my report, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Chris.
Okay, so MEVLC met, we met with Representative Noble to discuss some ideas on how to utilize some of the funding that he had available to us, and asked us to use to help businesses that were impacted by COVID, about $750,000. The areas that we presented to him were to cover the area of, of lack of workforce that we're all experiencing, and we recommended $190,000 for business assistant grants, and $10,000 for COVID products needed to- needed to help those businesses. We looked at, suggested $200,000 for MISO 4060 loans, $50,000 for a chamber bilingual training and mentorship program to help new businesses and struggling, struggling businesses to repurpose themselves. And $200,000 for workforce development specialists that would help in, in trying to retrain or, or aim some of the students coming to high school into training programs that can help the local workforce out. $50,000 for data to support that work, and $50,000 for an apprenticeship program for that work. Representative Noble was very impressed at the city's flexibility to quickly put together such a complete and well-thought-out list. Next step for approval, and the next step is approval from those that hold the purse strings, and then finalization of exactly how these programs will be operated. And that's my report.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go to Kelly.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, on YCAP, we had a meeting today. Of course, I wasn't able to stay for the entire meeting, but basically, we're focusing on strategic planning, particularly at the staff level at this point in time, although some of the information has floated back to the Board of Directors and we're interpreting it as we will. Also, the, there's a plan, or we voted today to reduce the number of meetings that we are having, two quarterly meetings for the Board of Directors, and then keep our committee meetings on a monthly basis. There's a McMinnville meeting tomorrow at 9:30, and I was trying to find when the next Navigation Center meeting was. Perhaps Heather could help me out on that one, so everyone can attend since they're intensely interested. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Kelly. Council President Drapkin, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We conducted interviews for the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission, and you'll see that later on in your packet. And then we, at the DEI Advisory Committee, we had a quick meeting with the new McMinnville School District Superintendent, Debbie Brockett. It was lovely to meet her. And then a presentation, as you know, we've been meeting with all department heads, and this week we got to meet with Claudia Cisneros, our city recorder, and learn about her work and, and how that work can cross over. We also had two vacancies come up on the DEI Advisory Committee. With a resignation, one person's work has, workload has increased substantially. And we're taking a moment to look at our recruitment process, since we need to recruit for this committee now, or advertise for the committee, as we would with any committee. So we're taking a moment to evaluate that process as we get ready to put out some of those advertisements and, and see what else we need to be doing, or should be doing, or could be doing. So trying to, to take our own, our own, our own practice that we need to go through right now and add another level of evaluation. Thanks much.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go to Adam.
Uh, yeah, YCOM hasn't met since our, our last council meeting. We'll be meeting here in a few days. And Airport Commission hasn't met, but you will see an appointment later on this evening in your packet. And then Fire Districting has kind of taken, taken up the bulk of, of my workload. We had a meeting of potential partners. Lafayette, Amity, and MAC Rule showed up to that meeting. Lafayette took the IGA back to their council and they decided to, right now wasn't the right time for them. MAC Rule decided they wanted to move forward with the next step, which would be polling their constituents. And then Amity voted 3-2 that they would potentially like to move forward. So that's kind of where the districting discussion is right now, and I'm sure Rich will have some other information for you in his report.
Thank you, Adam. And maybe you can give some context, because you've been to some of those meetings later on. Zach?
Is that me next?
Yep.
Oh, man, I can't believe I talked that little. Dang. Okay. Two updates. Landscape Review Committee meets tomorrow, so you'll have to hang tight for that. Big agenda item is the work plan. And then update on MAC PAC. Last week's meeting was the last meeting of MAC PAC. They'll be getting in front of the council to make a presentation on the final report, I believe in January. I think I just saw that get scheduled. But I just wanted to take a super special last meeting to say thanks to the staff members who pushed that forward. Ann Lane, who's no longer here, but way back when we started this, was running that. Katie Noid, Rob Porter, Steve Ganzer, Jenny Berg, and, and all led by Susan Muir on that process, who was just a joy and a treat to work with every day as we worked through a lot of really cool stuff. We had a really cool, phenomenal consultant team made up of Ken Ballard, Jim Cowlish, Heather DeGrella, and a few others on their firm that came in and out to help us on certain things. So, and all who volunteered their time and effort and energy on MAC PAC. That turned out to be a longer than what we had anticipated and, you know, survive a pandemic and a budget crisis and a, a, a public relations crisis of an institution and lots of things happened during MAC PAC. And so it was, we're excited and proud of what we're going to put in front of you and feel really good about it. And so last, last meeting, we reviewed the, the final report, made some big suggestions and changes, had good discussion, went through it, and, and moved it along. So that's the end of, of MAC PAC, and we'll be back. And hopefully, there'll be more to do when we're ready.
Thank you, Zach. Let me just give a smattering of some of the things I've been involved in. As Remy had indicated, I've been very, very involved in numerous interviews for the committee assignments, which, or the committee members and their terms, and we'll be coming out with that tonight. I can give you an example. At the Airport Commission, we had one opening, and we had seven applicants. And these applicants are just phenomenal. And, and so hard decisions were made, but I think we, we're getting some of the best of the best on our committee movement. Had an opportunity a week and a half ago to participate in the Mid Willamette Valley Action Committee on Transportation. And had an opportunity just to share with the committee the priority that I've been sharing with you, that the Newburgh-Dundee bypass is, we've seen our funding of, and $2 million, $20 million of our funding evaporate, given the lack of earmarks, and then ODOT changing their mind. And so I was able to present to MWAQ a need for us to write a letter to the OTC, the Oregon Transportation Commission, of our desire that that's our number one project in the, in this region, and we need to fund that. And so that will be happening January 16th. I'll be going with the group to the OTC and, and testifying before that group. We had, we had yesterday the Third Street Improvement Project PAC meeting. And, and I know a number of you've reached out and asked what it would take to be a part of that. That group is made up of project advisory committee members who were previous members on this project advisory committee. We also had every member of MUAC, and we've had representatives from McMinnville Downtown Association. That advisory committee is made up of members of the chamber. So we had a lot of representatives yesterday, as we talked about initially, taking a look at the beginning of design of what Third Street ought to look like. And we're talking about what it ought to look like in 40 to 50 years, because that's the horizon. That is going to take a lot of money, time, and effort to get there. We're going to be meeting on a monthly basis. I think we have six meetings moving down. Sira is the design architect. They helped us on the Alpine Avenue, and they bring a lot of expertise to the table there. So that's, that's my report. Let's go ahead and do department head reports. And we've got a couple of ones that we need to start out with. Our first consideration is for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant and an application for 2021. And so the chief has put in the packet some information. And so we'll call on Chief Rich Lippert to, to present. Chief, if you'd go ahead and give us some information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and counselors, we are in our grant cycle. It is, it closes December 17th for the Assistance to Firefighter Grants. Last year, we applied for SCBA's. We were not awarded that grant. We are applying again for SCBA's this year. The model of the SCBA's that we have is the 2007 model. And while the, the age of our SCBA's doesn't make them the highest priority, the fail rate and the, and the mechanical issues that we are having with them places them in a higher-than-medium application rate. So we felt it was imperative that we try and find some additional funding, particularly given the cost of these personal protective equipment, that we try and find an alternative method to get some money in the door. So we are just asking permission from council to, to apply for the grant. If we are awarded the grant, we'll come, we will have to come back to council to accept the award.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And so in front of us is this consideration for Assistance to the Firefighters Grant. Any questions for Rich on this? Okay, I'm going to step out, and we're going, we're going to, we're going to ask for a motion to approve or authorize the chief to submit the 2021 AFG application.
No move.
It's been moved by Kelly, seconded by Adam. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Disauthorization passes unanimously, six to zero. Thank you. The next one that we have in front of us is authorizing the city attorney to enter into agreement on behalf of the city regarding settlements of the National Opioid Litigation Against Opioid Distributors and Jansen. And so I'll call on City Attorney Amanda Giles Hinman to present. We went over this in our executive session earlier this evening. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to provide some background and context for the public record and for public information. So tonight, I'm requesting authorization to enter into agreements necessary to finalize settlement agreements with opioid distributor, distributors and the opioid manufacturer Jansen. There is still the likelihood that another settlement agreement will occur at some date in the future with Purdue, but that will be handled through the Purdue bankruptcy. So that is separate from, from the settlement agreements. So if, to the extent anyone's interested in reviewing many documents and hundreds of pages of information regarding the opioid litigation, there's information available at nationalopioidsettlement.com. It contains the two draft agreements, one with the distributors and one with Jansen, as well as FAQs and, and executive summary and some really helpful flow charts and information if anyone's interested. I will be adding to the packet a memorandum for myself, as well as drafts of the relevant agreements that the city will need to sign, and excerpts from the settlement agreements of relevant, of information that may be relevant for us, considering they're hundreds of pages long. And that will be available after, after the meeting. So several states and local jurisdictions sued the, several opioid distributors and manufacturers in federal court. These suits were combined into one matter in the federal district court for the Northern District of Ohio. The city has not filed suit against the distributors or manufacturers, but those defendants, as they negotiate a settlement of, of the litigation, are interested in incorporating as many jurisdictions as possible to avoid future litigation. To that end, defendants are proposing to structure payouts to each state and thus to jurisdictions within the state to incentivize participation. One of the key thresholds is, is cities that are over 30,000 in population. So that would be McMinnville. For the distributors' settlement, it's a 15% incentive that's tied to getting cities with a population of over 30,000 to agree to the settlement. And for the Jansen settlement, it's a 20% incentive. For McMinnville to join the settlements, there are likely four agreements that we will have to sign. A participation agreement for each of the settlements, and I did include an example of that participation agreement in the memo, so that will be added to the packet. It's a simple three-page document that essentially says, as a, as a participating entity, we are allowing ourselves to collect our portion of the settlement money, but we are, and as in exchange for that, we are waiving our right to sue in the future. And then the, so that's the first two agreements. The other two agreements are allocation agreements. Those are specifically between the state, the state of Oregon and local jurisdictions. And that will outline how the money that goes into the state will be split between the state and local jurisdictions. A draft of that agreement, of the allocation agreement, was finally put, you know, pen to paper and sent out on Friday. So it's still a work in progress, but the main, the main issue, which is the distribution, the split, has been agreed upon, tentatively agreed upon as a 55-45 split, meaning 55% will go to the local jurisdictions and 45% will go to the state. There are still some issues that need to be worked out. That agreement is not finalized. A draft of that agreement is also going to be attached as part of the memo, so it can be reviewed, but it is subject to some fine-tuning and changes. The main issue in getting these, these documents signed is that the distributors and Jansen have put January 2nd, 2022 as the end date for determining whether you want to join, and thus getting that incentive, that, that percentage incentive added on to the settlement amount for, for our state. And after that January 2 deadline, they, both the distributors and Jansen have 30 days to determine whether or not they've achieved critical mass of getting enough jurisdictions to sign on to make them feel comfortable entering into the settlement agreement. There's no definition of what critical mass is, so it's unclear whether we will know until 30 days after January 2nd whether or not the settlement will move forward. But our participation is necessary, one, to get the incentive, and two, to help determine the critical mass. So with that, staff is asking for the authorization to sign those agreements once they are finalized and before the January 2nd deadline. Should there be any, any provisions that pop up that, you know, I'm not aware of being an issue right now, that render it, you know, in my, in my expert opinion, to not be in the city's best interest? Rather than signing them, I would ask the council to convene a special session to further discuss those issues before signing it. But barring anything like that from happening with your authorization, I will sign those agreements once they, once they are finalized. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the matter.
Thank you, Amanda, for that recap. Any questions about Amanda at this time? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to authorize the city attorney to enter into these agreements.
No move.
Chris has moved. A second?
Second.
Zach? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion to authorize Amanda to go into this agreement has passed unanimously, six to zero. Let's move back up to department head reports. Let's start with Heather tonight.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a, a real quick update. Some of you obviously heard earlier this evening, we are going to start a recruitment for the parking enforcement officer. Amy Kepler has moved on to Newburgh Dundee, where she is now an evidence tech up there. And so that's just a staff update. I'd like to also just sort of put in everybody's mind, I don't know if everybody was able to read the News Register... this evening or this afternoon. Former Chief Rod Brown passed away this last Friday. Rod Brown was hired in 1990, retired in 2000, and was the chief that hired me. And I think it would be remiss if we just didn't keep his family and all that work for him in their thoughts. He was a really a pioneer in bringing MACPD forward, extremely innovative, extremely forward-thinking, just an absolute gem to work for. So I think I would like to just at least mention him this evening and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Chief. Rich?
Mr. Mayor and council, just a quick update. We've had a couple of other personnel moves. Chief Loomis, who was a battalion chief with us and an employee with us for about 15 years, has decided to move to North Dakota and shoe horses. So his position became vacant. And as a result, we promoted Captain David Stovin into that position. And then we had a captain's process where we promoted Lisa Skipper and Cody Quinland into the captain's roles to replace the two promotions that we had into the battalion chief in the last month or month and a half or so. We currently have five conditional offers and personnel in process for the five vacancies that we had, existing vacancies that we had. We are waiting for council approval of the contract this evening to advertise the six new positions authorized by council so we can advertise with the new rates and the new benefit packages. The other thing that we have out there is previously staff briefed you on our concerns with this associated with the Amity Fire District Board and are committed to report back to you if those issues did not get resolved. I'm here to report that the issues around the Amity Fire District Board continue even after we discussed our concerns with them regarding their violation of public meeting law. Staff is requesting the council authorize staff to send a 90-day notice to terminate the intergovernmental agreement with Amity Fire District pursuant to Section 1 of the agreement at this time.
Thank you, Chief. We also just, for those that have been around the city for a long time, Fire Chief Jerry Smith passed away, I think, within the last two weeks. And he served for many, many years just before I moved to town 30 years ago. So we're going quite a ways back, but that was in the paper also.
It was. Mr. Mayor, I need your help in authorizing staff to submit that letter to Amity.
Okay, okay. So is there a motion to?
I would like to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly, seconded by Adam. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes six to zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Anne, we've got you on the line, our new Public Works Director. Do you have anything to report to the council? We welcome you.
Good evening. For some reason, I can't get my video. It says the host has stopped it, so I don't think you can see me.
Okay.
If there's any way to let me get my video on, I'd love for you to see me. But thank you for having me. I guess I would say, oh, here we go, start my video.
There we go.
Hi. The biggest news in Public Works is that we hired a new director, and that would be me. I'm Anne Pagano. I started on November 1st, so I've been here about six weeks. It's been really great getting to know everyone. And those of you I haven't met, I look forward to meeting you. Now, we're also, we've advertised for a new city engineer, so that's also exciting news. That will close on January 2nd. So that's about it from Public Works for now.
Well, again, welcome. And Anne and I had an opportunity to do interviewing with Kylie for the for the Airport Commission. And so we had a full day of being together. So again, welcome, and it's exciting to have you with us.
Thank you.
And your ties are around McMinnville. It's it's good, so it's good to have you.
Thank you very much.
Scott Burke?
Nothing for the council tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And it may just be his system that's helping us tonight. Oh, here he comes.
You can hear me over there, but nothing for the council tonight. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. Let's go to Amanda.
Nothing further to report.
Thank you. And before Jeff, I just wanted to make a comment. We've had a request to see if we'd like to meet in person as a council again. And in talking to Jeff and to Scott Burke, we have some hybrid issues at the Civic Center that need to be resolved before we could meet in person or a hybrid in person and on Zoom. And those reasons, those issues will be resolved. We're looking at the end of January. We have some supply chain issues of getting equipment in. We have one of our slide projectors, it's not working. So being able to meet in the Civic Center effectively is out to January. So what I've asked is that Claudia is going to poll the council in a poll to see who would be, who would like to meet in person and who doesn't want to meet in person. And we'll be able to bring that back, we'll be able to bring that back to a council meeting in January as we get closer to resolving the technical difficulties that prevent us from doing that.
Will there be any forms of separation or anything? Will we be wearing masks? What would you do?
Yeah, what we, what we want to see, Kelly, is number one, what what the desire is to move forward. And then we'll have that discussion and see how we would best accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's end up with Jeff. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just real briefly, I want to bring you up to date. We will be bringing forward a report from Deb Gialdi regarding utility surcharge methodologies. Her work's going to take her just a little bit longer than we had originally forecast for you. So our plan is to have a work session in January to talk with you about our updated and refined core services work and then to have a joint meeting with the Water and Light Commission in probably early February with Deb Gialdi, where she lays out options and alternatives for the body to consider. So just wanted to give you that process update. Nothing else to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And then as I was calling on Jeff, I looked on my screen right below him, and Jennifer is there. So Jennifer, I'm sorry, I missed you. You have anything to report to us?
No worries. Yeah, I'm, I was going to mention where we're at with Deb and the rate study. So Jeff beat me to the punch. So we're really excited with the work that she's gotten started with. And also, I hope our audit will, both the city's audit and the urban renewal audit will be officially issued this week. And so we'll be, I've got, at this point, it's still draft. It's not official official, but we've got clean audit opinions on the city, the urban renewal, as well as our single audit for the federal awards that is done. So I'm really pleased about that. And we will be bringing Tanya to go into more details, our audit partner, Tanya Moffett, in January or February. We're, I'll be reaching out to the Audit Committee for availability on their calendars. So so that's all I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. That takes us to our consent agenda this evening. We've got seven items on the consent agenda. Is there any counselor that would request to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda and heard in its regular place on the agenda? Adam?
Yeah, I'd like to remove Resolution 2021-59.
Okay. And that would be the resolution pointing Jerry Hart and Victoria Ernst as representatives of the City of McMinnville Budget Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Any, anybody else like to take something off of the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
No move.
Okay. And we've, we've removed the one item 2021-59. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously six to zero. Let's bring item B to to the table. That's Resolution 2021-59. And again, I'll read that. And then, Adam, you can voice your concern. That's a resolution number 2021-59, a resolution appointing Jerry Hart and Victoria Ernst as representatives of the City of McMinnville Budget Committee. Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a little further context on kind of how you guys worked through those applications. I requested the applications from Claudia yesterday. And I was just curious, kind of the reasoning for Mrs. Haas not getting put back on the Budget Committee. I felt the last two years, she really drove dialogue that we had not had in previous Budget Committee years in budget processes while I've been on council. And so I just really valued her, her input and her driving dialogue around difficult, difficult issues and her replacement. Looking through her application is although qualified, doesn't really have the perspective of the budget issues we faced and how we got to where we're at, only being a resident for a year. And I don't feel that she overwhelmingly outweighs Sheri to to replace Sheri on the Budget Committee. And I just wanted to have the dialogue around whoever did the interviews, which I believe was you, Mayor, Counselor Minke, and possibly Jeff or Jennifer, as well as, as well as what other, other counselors weigh in on their thoughts.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. Again, it was another grouping of, of, I think, we had 11 applicants for two opportunities and again, went through an all-day process. From my perspective, Sheri truly does bring a perspective and especially being the treasurer of the City of St. Paul, has some respect into a smaller community. As we talked to her, we, we talked a little bit about her desire or ability to, 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 to have good dialogue with the group. And she, she shared with us that, you know, she wasn't as comfortable sharing dialogue. But again, when she does, it's good dialogue that has us take a strong look. So again, we walked away with a feeling that, that although she brings tremendous experience and value to the committee, she doesn't articulate through all of the items as well as we thought we wanted to see. Now, Kelly has a much better relationship with Sheri and had a dialogue with her also. So I'll, I'll just turn a little bit of that over to Kelly and then if Jennifer wants to, to weigh in. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Thanks a bunch, Scott. Sheri is a very good friend of mine. I think she has the capability of being an excellent Budget Committee member. And I do think there were moments in the last couple of years that I felt she was confused about some of the issues. She, on the other hand, feels she was not confused a bit, and informed me so. So I, I, I don't know what to say, particularly on this particular issue. It's, it has to do with me being a friend with her and us talking about it a little bit beforehand. So I, I think I'd rather stay a neutral party in this whole thing.
But I, I can, I can also add from a different perspective. You know, we were very impressed with Victoria. And as we had the interview, very engaging, bringing what we felt was a different perspective, one that would be needed. You know, sometimes on the Budget Committee, we just get in a rut with people coming back. And so we had really good dialogue with every one of the candidates, what they felt they could bring to the table in our notes. And so given those things, we just felt that Victoria would bring a, an innovative, fresh view to the Budget Committee. And then, again, we have staff, and I don't know how willing Jennifer is to weigh in. She primarily didn't vote. It was Kelly and I that are representing the council. But any insights?
Well, interestingly, Jennifer, you might want to took the outcome of this situation.
It's, I mean, I, I wasn't involved in the decision-making, but I was in the room, I was in the room all day. It was, you know, it's a full day because we had 10 or 11 candidates that were met with. And so the way, the way I recall some of the decision-making discussions going is there was a weighing of, okay, we, we've gone through this period of really intense work with the Budget Committee throughout this summer. What are the trade-offs and thinking about? Should we stick with the same group to keep moving? Or are there upsides to, to having new thinking and just new people at the table? And so I think my sense was that that was part of what the Mayor and Counselor Minke were, were weighing, that at least this way, we did have some continuity and some new voice. So I think that was also part of it. And, and I do just want to point out, it may not come across in her application. I can't recall, although I guess I could go through the packet. She is a, hasn't been living in McMinnville very long, but she was, I believe, born and raised in Yamhill County. So while she did go away for a period, she's a Yamhill County native. And so I think that there's knowledge that way also in terms of her, her engagement and roots in the community. So, so I don't know if that.
Well, no, I, I think you pretty much summarized it well. I tried to understand this.
So, so Adam, I'll, I'll just go back to you and just kind of, that was, you know, we did this probably, well, it was right when I got back from vacation, so three weeks ago, and we had to turn our notes in for public record. So it's all coming, you know, it's all from my, my head. But that, that is kind of what we looked at and what we felt.
Okay, thank you for that additional context. Is there any other input from other councilors?
Yeah, Zach has his hand up. Zach?
Thanks. Maybe it kind of goes along with, I got a little bit lumped together on that consent agenda with the other board and committee resolution. And so not, obviously, that's already passed, and I didn't object to those members, but kind of in line with that. And this theme, process-wise, I know you've had liaisons help with the interviews in past. What was the engagement this year with that and the methodology to or not to? And what is the, what is the, what is the method or published method on, on how this does and doesn't happen? I mean, it looks like you had no shortage of applicants from everyone, let alone the, you know, the rock star group or the Budget Committee, but seven applicants for the Airport Commission. So I'm just wondering what and why people were and weren't engaged in that decision-making and interviewing process.
I, I think, I think the, one of the rationales is that when we do this, it's an all-day affair. And you can't come in for part of it and then back out of it. So I, the Budget Committee and the Airport Commission, we went from 9:00 AM until 5:00 o'clock almost. And, and putting that burdensome on individuals that are working, we have a very hard time of being able to, to do with those that are, that are retired. And again, as Mayor, I want to be a part of all of those discussions. I mean, that, that's primarily the rationale. Zach is just, it's a, you know, I probably put three full days into interviewing in the matter of a week. And I don't know anyone that has the ability to take three full days off of their regular job to come in and do that. And again, it has to be consistent. You have to be there. You have to be there for every interview for it to be appropriate.
Yeah, I understand and respect the methodology there. I don't know with other counselors, but I certainly didn't take, I didn't run for office thinking that it was only going to be office, you know, council hours and I check out and hang up the phone and nobody distracts me. I signed up to do all and more. And so I guess maybe my request would be, give us the opportunity to say no next time and to not be a part of that. I know I love and enjoy the council liaison duties I get to do and have and would relish the opportunity to be a part of the decision-making on who is and isn't a part of that committee. So my request would be maybe in the future, give us the opportunity to say no and miss out on the marathons or join in for the one or two interviews if there are only that many applicants. So and then Counselor Minke, I didn't, it wasn't clear. Did you end up interviewing Cherry or did you say you didn't interview Cherry on account of?
Oh, no, no. We, I interviewed her and she and I had a very frank discussion during the interview. So I do not feel bad about the way it ended up. And I don't think Cherry does either.
So.
I guess.
Go ahead, Mac. Go ahead.
Oh, so Jermaine, to the specific resolution held over that we're working on, I was, I love and value Jerry's, Jerry Hart's opinion and standing on the Budget Committee. I'm glad to see his name continued over. It was great to see so many other names. I was a little surprised that Cherry didn't get moved forward again. I feel like it's a little bit of a, yeah, she pushed some issues and maybe this is where she's getting for it. But I would have liked to see her voice on there. I don't doubt that the new member is going to be great. She seems almost overqualified and should probably come in for our jobs. But I would have liked to see Cherry on there. And so I guess it is what it is.
Well, let me address both, let me address both Zach and Adam's concern. Jeff Towery, if we could take a note back to Kylie and just maybe open it up a little more for those that have the ability to spend the time next year. I don't think limiting it to two members of the City Council, again, you know, we can't go over three or we have a quorum. But I think maybe we could open it up and especially on the smaller applications where we have one or two, we could have more involved from that perspective. So I think we'll take that back. And Adam, hopefully that will address your concern and Zach as we move to 2022.
Noted, Mayor. We'll do that. Thank you.
Let's go to Sal and then to Adam.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say that if the reason Cherry is not back on the, or not proposed to be back on the Budget Committee is based on her performance on the committee, I would think that that would be a grave disservice. I thought she was a very valuable member of the committee. I think that she raised uncomfortable issues. I think that we've had very, at times, less engaged Budget Committees, Budget Committees where people don't even show to just a couple of meetings, let alone the commitment that this past committee participated in. And I would definitely favor seeing her on the Budget Committee this time as well.
Let's go to Adam.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to kind of clarify my position on, in kind of Zach's comments. I don't think getting, you know, the full council involved or getting over the three is, or even getting three total is Counselor Geary's goal or my goal. I think more what he was getting at is who's ever the assigned liaison for that committee should at least be afforded an opportunity to turn down the chance to participate in the interviews since they have a little bit more context than, you know, even yourself
Absolutely.
with the committees. So I don't want to get bogged down in having, you know, too many of us in the room at one time or anything like that. And, you know, as far as the Budget Committee goes, Kelly chairs that and you're the mayor. So, you know, for your guys' interviews, I get why you two were in the room for those, for the, I considered pulling the other appointments off the agenda to have this conversation because we're kind of having two different conversations right now. But yeah, I mean, if, I don't, Amanda can maybe walk me through the legal Roberts rules of orders part of it. But I mean, I would be inclined to push Jerry and Cherry through for nomination for Budget Committee through a formal motion process if that's an available opportunity this evening or if we need to bring that back through a formal resolution in our January meeting. But, and that's nothing against who you guys put forward. I think she is very qualified. I just feel that of our current Budget Committee members. Sherry was one of the more involved ones. And, you know, I would like to continue to see strong applicant pools. But I think Jerry and Sherry were both very engaging these past couple of budget years. And I would like to keep that dialogue going to, especially with us getting into new revenue streams. I think engaged Budget Committee members is very important.
Thank you for those clarifications. Chris?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to get on record in agreement with Counselor Geary, Garvin, and Peralta, that, you know, I felt like, I haven't been here in previous years. It's my first go-around in the Budget Committee. But if you were to ask me who were the most engaged and involved, Sherry would be right at the top of the list. So I think it's kind of a disservice to then turn around and have her not be on the Budget Committee the following year if she wants to continue doing so. So I would be along with Counselor Garvin. If the motion can be made now, I'd second it to move Haas and Sherry forward.
We don't have, we don't have Kylie on the call at this point. She was on earlier. Amanda, what is your legal opinion of where we ought to go?
Yeah, Mayor, I think I'm double-checking the charter right now, but I'm pretty sure what the charter says is that the Mayor nominates and then the council confirms. And so it's a little bit different than our standard motions practice. My, so my suggestion would be if there's no issue with Jerry Hart, that the motion get made for Jerry Hart and not the other individual, and then it'll be on the Mayor to make another nomination. But I'm scouring through the charter right at this moment.
Sure.
Trying to confirm that that's my understanding.
Is there a problem with adding an additional person this year?
So you can't add extra people to the Budget Committee? The composition.
Oh, I'm trying.
Yeah, the composition of the Budget Committee is set out by state law. It requires the electors, in this case, the seven of you are council members and an equal number of lay members. So you're capped at 14.
Okay.
Okay, so what we will do is we will amend Resolution 2021-59 to appoint Jerry Hart as a representative of the McMinnville Budget Committee. And then Victoria, I'll talk to Amanda and to Kylie and Jeff, and then we'll see how to move forward. And we'll bring that to the council first meeting in January. So in front of us, we have for consideration Resolution 2021-59, a resolution appointing Jerry Hart as a representative of the City of McMinnville Budget Committee.
So moved.
Okay, Sal? And a second?
Second, the motion as read.
Zach, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution 2021-59 passes as amended unanimously, six to zero. Thank you for that great discussion. This evening, we have new business and it deals with the McMinnville Water and Light Commission appointment. And as the Mayor, I make a recommendation of the reappointment of Tom Tankersley for another four-year term that will expire December 31st, 2025. Any questions of Mr. Tankersley remaining on the McMinnville Water and Light Commission? Tom is getting pretty close to 30 years. His institutional knowledge is, he and Ed Gormley that serve, have served for almost 30 years each is tremendous, of a tremendous value. So any questions that anyone would have? Sal?
My only comment is that Tom Tankersley has amazing judgment and I encourage us to reappoint him to the committee with minimal conversation.
Okay. Any other comments?
I would concur with Counselor Peralta.
Absolutely. So I'll ask for a motion to reappoint Tom Tankersley for another four years on the McMinnville Mac Water and Light Commission.
So moved.
I've got Remy and I've got Kelly. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I abstain.
Okay. So we have the reappointment of Tom, five in favor and one abstention. Okay. Got to make sure I'm on the right page. We're moving now into resolutions this evening. We are considering Resolution 2021-58, a resolution by the City of McMinnville Contract Review Board adopting findings to utilize a construction manager, general contractor as alternative procurement method for the navigation center. And we've had, we've had that discussion, but we'll call on Heather to just update us a bit on that.
I don't know if I, yeah, worms again, but yes, this is the resolution following the public hearing that we just talked about. And the resolution adopts the findings for the city to engage in the alternative procurement method of a construction manager, general contractor for this project.
And we had good discussion as Heather indicated in the public, the public hearing. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2021-58 passes unanimously, six to zero. That takes us to our ordinances. Go ahead.
Can we just clarify? I think, did Counselor Chenoweth say aye or nay? Because it's, I thought he said nay.
I said aye. I was just really delayed in getting unmuted. I'm sorry.
Okay, I apologize.
Oh, no, thank you. I appreciate you doing that, but it was all my fault. Yeah. So again, Resolution 2021-58 passes unanimously, six to zero. That takes us to our ordinances this evening. We are going to consider the first reading with possible second reading of ordinance number 5107. We are considering 5107. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Seeing none, we will have the City Attorney read ordinance 5107 into the record.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5107, an ordinance adopting the OR99W, Linfield to McDonald, Active Transportation Concept Plan as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Transportation System Plan and amending Chapter 6 of the McMinnville Transportation System Plan.
Thank you, Amanda. We'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Heather?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen to provide you a staff report. This is a recommendation coming from the Planning Commission after hosting a public hearing. So you have already had a work session on this. I'm not going to go into great detail, but you are taking action tonight. That's a landage actions. We want to ensure that you understand the action you're taking and the findings behind that action. It is a recommendation from the Planning Commission. They have took a vote on October 21st, 2021. You can approve their recommendation. You can request a public hearing or you can choose not to support their recommendation. This is a legislative initiative, so staff is initiating as we are not under any particular time clock. So if you want to have a public hearing, we have enough time to put that together and conduct that. The ordinance itself amends the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan by adopting this plan, the Active Trans Plan, that's what we're going to call it, as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Transportation System Plan. The McMinnville Transportation System Plan is a document that was adopted as part of the Comprehensive Plan. So we call this a type 4 land use application. It amends, it also amends the Transportation System Plan by adding buffered lanes, buffered bike lanes and neighborhood greenways to Chapter 6, called the Bicycle System Plan, as bicycle facility types to utilize in McMinnville. So that will be two new types of bicycle facilities that will be in our Transportation System Plan that we can implement as projects. The logistics behind this is a project management team worked with a project advisory committee from, for about eight months, from August 2020 to April 2021, and a group of consultants on evaluating existing conditions and recommending this draft Active Trans Plan. And the study area was northeast McDonald Lane to Linfield Avenue. We hosted a joint work session with both you and the Planning Commission on April 27th, 2021. Notice was provided to DLCD on September 15th, 2021. Notice was published in the News Register on October 12th. And then October 21, Planning Commission hosted a public hearing. At that time, we received 26 letters of support for adopting the plan and those have been provided you as an attachment to your staff report. Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the proposed amendments to you. This achieves two of your adopted City Council strategies, so the goal of city government capacity to strengthen the city's ability to prioritize and deliver municipal services with discipline and focus through the objective of developing and fostering local and regional partnerships. This is a partnership with ODOT to put this plan together and as well as to implement the plan on Highway 99. It also achieves your goal of growth and development character to guide growth and development strategically, responsibly and responsibly to enhance our unique character by educating and building support for innovative and creative solutions and to establish a program to promote and implement pilot projects. This is an ODOT pilot project as it is a new type of planning process for them. The background for this is ODOT did recently adopt what they call a Blueprint for Urban Design, or Bud. And really what they were trying to do is determine how their facilities can be used in urban situations for more than just motorists and freight and how they can bring active transportation modes to their infrastructure, so bicyclists and pedestrians in safe ways and in ways that people will actually use them. And to implement the program, ODOT looked for a pilot project and approached the City of McMinnville about it. So it was funded by ODOT. They approached us because we had reached out to them just prior to this effort to Jenna Berman, ODOT Region 2 Active Transportation Liaison, to bring her here to talk about how do we improve bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure in McMinnville on the ODOT facilities. And we had identified 99 as one of the ones we were concerned about. So that all happened before we even started this discussion. And then Highway 99 in McMinnville has been identified as a high-risk corridor for people who are walking and biking in ODOT statewide systemic safety analysis. That means throughout the whole state, this is considered a high-risk corridor. ODOT put up the money for this project and hired Kittleson and Associates to work on it with us. And a project advisory committee was put together by the city, representing different stakeholders, including accessibility advocate and someone from the school district and someone from the downtown. So we were looking for all the different impacted stakeholders to participate in this. I believe, yes, Counselor Geary served as the stakeholder from the City Council. As I told you, the study area was northeast McDonald Road to Linfield Avenue. We were restricted in terms of the size of the study area because of the funding available. We tried to eke out as many dimes and pennies as we could to get as far as we could on 99. But ODOT did agree to look at parallel side streets and consider them as alternative bicycle routes. So look at our local streets and see if they could serve the purpose that the ODOT facility, that they wanted the ODOT facility to serve if the ODOT facility was not safe enough. So we were able to. was not safe enough, so that, so we were able to broaden our study area in that regard. The corridor vision statement is the primary purpose of this plan is to identify improvements in, on 99W that will result in a safer, more comfortable, and attractive place to walk, bike, roll, and facilitate transit use, and roll is becoming a nomenclature to identify both people who are in wheelchairs, that do not want to be going over concrete joints, as well as people on scooters and skateboards. And what does this mean for our community, what we're trying to do is get the, all the people who would be interested in walking and biking in our community, but aren't doing so because the infrastructure doesn't exist where they feel comfortable to do so, out of their cars and walking and biking to different destinations, that saves money for everyone in terms of our road infrastructure, right now, it's, it's anticipated that only 5% of people who are comfortable walking, people who would walk and bike in 99 are doing so, and we consider them the strong and fearless, because of the height that's there, and that there's a whole another 60 some odd percent that would do so, if the facilities were there that they felt comfortable and safe in, and that's, that's who we're trying to target with this. So we did existing study, existing condition study on where are the gaps and barriers in the walking network on the corridor, and where are the gaps and barriers in the biking network on the corridor. And then we looked at several different design types that we could, you know, talk about for McMinnville for this corridor, we looked at a two-way separated bike lane on Adams Street, that was one concept, buffered bike lanes on Adams Street and Baker Street, so that doesn't have the vertical separation, it just has the additional real estate on the, the roadbed there separating the bicyclists from the cars and the traveling, and then we looked at a neighborhood greenway, and we looked at one on Davis Street and a one on Evans Street. We evaluated those from a variety of different criteria, and from that evaluation, the, the highest scoring concept was a neighborhood greenway on Davis Street. We reached out and did, so we did this during COVID, I'm trying to remember, yeah, it was all in meetings, so during COVID, and so we put together a virtual open house and survey for, to get the public preferences, we got 76 responses, 530 page views in terms of that outreach, and we asked people questions of, why do you walk or bike in McMinnville, how are you comfortable, and where are you comfortable, and how do you get around, so to understand our audience. And then we asked them what they would prefer as well, in terms of different facilities for this corridor to get north and south in McMinnville, essentially, that's how 99 serves our community, and the, the concept that got the greatest response was, again, the neighborhood greenway on Davis Street. But buffered bike lanes also got a high score in that public outreach. We also talked about pedestrian crossings, to make those safer, because that's one of the reasons it's considered an unsafe corridor, and what are the different ways that we could bring in better infrastructure to promote safety, and so we talked about rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and how those could be used for crosswalks that are not at what we call controlled stop intersections, and we also looked at signage for telling the vehi, the vehicular more risk, an advanced stop here for pedestrians, so they're not getting into the pedestrian frame when the pedestrian's trying to walk across the street, and then high visibility crosswalk markings, and then also how to provide better lighting at night for those facilities. And we identified four areas where we feel these pedestrian enhancements need to take place in terms of crossings on the corridor, and these are all, as I said, uncontrolled intersections where the motorist is not stopping unless there is a reason to stop for a pedestrian, and we want to make sure that that pedestrian's safe while they're crossing. And then we looked at preferred solutions for the bicyclist network, and studied the buffered bike lanes and the neighborhood greenway on Davis Street, as those were the two that bubbled up the most, and how they could best serve the community in getting people to their destinations, and the schools, and from residential neighborhoods to shopping and things of that nature, it looks like Counselor Peralta has his hand raised.
I do, Heather, could you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yeah.
Thanks, so the, can, can you, I, I think I know where all of these enhanced crossings are, but, but can you help orient me, the, the one on the far right is the crossing over by the high school? The one in the center right is, is that Third Street in downtown?
Third Street is right here. Is that what you're talking about? Am I on the right slide that you're on?
You're on the correct slide, so if I'm looking at this, I see basically four, four cross, four, four crosswalks.
Yes.
The one on the furthest right is the high school.
Yes, at 15th Street.
Okay, the next one to the left of that is?
Eighth Street.
Eighth Street, okay, and then the next one over is?
Third Street, right here, Third and Adams.
And then the final one is kind of over by Walgreens?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Was there any consideration or to doing something between Third Street and Walgreens in addition to that, I'd had multiple constituent requests to that effect for the TSP, and I don't see that reflected, and I think it kind of makes sense because the, the commercial is starting to go down Baker on that side, you know, if you go from Bad Neat Chocolate across, it seems like there's starting to become more commercial in that area, and I wonder if, if any consideration has been given or could still be given to enhancing in that area as well.
So I think there's the opportunity to still consider it, but we did do a lot of study, that, that actually was an active dialogue, and Counselor Geary might remember more of the details than I do about it, but it was an active dialogue amongst the group as to where should this sort of fourth crossing go to serve this area down here on the couplet, and we talked a lot about who's using the crossing right now, and where are they going, so we have, we have a lot of homeless camps down in the ravine down here, and there's a lot of crossings taking place, the Walgreens, and then also Linfield students too, and so that's why we ended up here, we looked at, this is like around Hamley Street, I think, and we looked at that too, the consultants from a traffic perspective were a little concerned, because if you think of that corridor, you're going up an incline and it's curling, right here, you have a curve, and so the, the sight distance of the vehicle traveling south isn't great. And so that was one of the concerns about how, you know, if you market, people will use it, and we wanted to make sure it's a safe place to cross.
I, I understand, could you at least flag that for some level of reconsideration just based on the public interest that I?
I think it's in the appendix, but yes, definitely can, and we're gonna be updating our TSP, so one of the things I didn't say, I just said from the beginning, was we're, we're bringing these documents forward to you now to adopt as a supplemental document to the TSP, so we can start the memorialization process that we want this to move into the next TSP program as we update that.
So this is not the TSP, this is a document that precedes that next?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Got it?
Yep, this is a specialized district doctor, document that's very independent for just this corridor, but can really set the stage for how we talk about bicycle and pedestrian moving forward in our TSP.
Thank you.
Thanks for the questions. So in terms of bicycle facilities, then there's near-term recommendations and long-term recommendations in this plan, the near-term recommendation is to implement a neighborhood greenway on Davis Street with Shero's signage and some traffic calming, and the long-term recommendations is to do further improvements on Davis Street to really create that neighborhood greenway. There's also near-term recommendations for buffered bike lanes on Oregon 99, when, when the repaving project comes through, we expect that to happen sometime in the next couple of years, and so the, the reason why it's important to adopt this as a city locally, and for ODOT to adopt it, is that it's been on the books, and it will be considered when ODOT comes in and does their project, if we don't have it, they won't do it. So we wanted to get in front of that. And then also to look at potentially doing that buffered, that vertical separation at the intersections where you have high turn volumes along Adams Street, and which is happening consistently south of Second Street, so that there's no driveway conflict points, and to do further study for that before we implement those, and in the plan itself, there's, there's a study about how that would look. So the findings to support this action, interestingly, it kind of came about by happenstance because of dialogues we were having with ODOT, but it's actually been discussed in this community for quite a while. In the TSP today, it says, as noted in the street system plan, pavement conditions have deteriorated on Adams and Baker Streets, at some point in time, both streets will likely need to be reconstructed to safely carry future traffic demand, McMinnville should coordinate with ODOT to define and program the reconstruction of Adams and Baker Streets, and the future update of the STIP, the Statewide Transportation Permit Program, and include with it a number of pedestrian bicycle access and safety enhancements, so 10 years ago, we were talking about this potential reconstruction project, and that we really needed to look at bicycle and pedestrian safety enhancements for that, and to get it into the STIP, we need to have an adopted document to do so. Then in the chapter for the, so the TSP is a chapter on bicycle system plans and pedestrian system plans, so in the pedestrian chapter, the goal is to provide a comprehensive system of connecting sidewalks and walkways that will encourage and increase safe pedestrian travel, but there is also a note in there that there is a need to better link and weave the Highway 99 corridor into the multimodal fabric of greater McMinnville, with stronger pedestrian connections to downtown, and there is also the need to improve the pedestrian environment along Adams and Baker Streets. So already in the TSP is, is a direction to us, the city, to do this type of project. The amendment we're recommending for the TSP is to add these buffered bike lanes in the language, so what you see here, that italicized and underlined is proposed amendments of new language to put into the TSP, so we have bicycle lanes, and now we're saying bicycle lanes can be buffered from adjacent traffic by vertical barriers, or can be identified by lane striking and signage, and then adding a whole new facility called neighborhood greenways. So we do talk about, for the facility and neighborhood greenways, we have some specific thresholds in there in terms of vehicle travel speed, it should not travel at 20 miles per, it should travel at 20 miles per hour or less, so we would slow down traffic, our current local residential streets are 25 miles per hour or less, we would slow it down to 20, and there shouldn't be a daily average of, there should be a daily average between 1,000 cars and 2,000 cars on those streets, and not more than 2,000. In terms of funding, once we adopted it as a supplemental document, we look at, you know, that, that creates a plan that we should be moving forward, and we want to look at the potential funding for this, there's a couple of different potential funding sources, here is the, an ODOT funding source, let's see, that can come forward in terms, oh, this is the potential funding for the different projects that are in this Active Trans Plan, and how much they cost, and then over here is our existing capital improvement program, that's in the existing TSP that we have today, and so we looked at how will these projects be funded through this funding mechanism, and if you look at the existing CIP, does talk about coordinating with ODOT, as they do their Highway 99 improvement projects, and try to get improvements funded through that process with them, and then we also have for bicycle and pedestrian projects, we have how we're gonna fund them over here, and if you know, the funding is gonna come from the general fund, from private development or from, from grants, so they are not SDC eligible, and, and unless they're part of a state project, not state funded eligible either. I will tell you right now, we're working with Jenna Berman again, and the school district on a Safe Routes to School program for both Subuil and Patton, and both of those Safe Routes to School plans are also building off of this Active Trans Plan, and putting some projects, some of these projects into there as well, so that they could be eligible for Safe Routes to School funding, which has gotten much more funding the last couple years than the years previously. So this is the testimony that we received, you have that in your staff report as part of the public record, and that concludes the presentation on the city, on the planning commission recommendation to you.
Thank you, Heather. Any questions for Heather, or discussion, Zach?
Yeah, it takes us to the report, and the time, I won't share anecdotal experience and my favor for the project, and then ask Director a question, the, the, this was a super interesting group to be a part of and be part of these discussions, the main takeaway, I'll say, and Heather alluded to it in how dangerous the stretch was, but specifically, it is a top 10 most dangerous stretch of road in the state of Oregon, I'll say that again, in the city of McMinnville, we have a top 10 most dangerous stretch of road for pedestrians in the state, so that one was really eye-opening, I mean, and I, I not only represented council, but I represented, you know, bicycling parent of children, and or pushers of strollers across that highway, and biking down that highway, this is just any way you can avoid getting on that highway was, was the best strategy, this plan is really phenomenal in how it puts people away from the danger areas, and it, and it directs people and keeps people safe, so I'm really excited and hope that we can get this, to that end, my question would be, being that we're approving this and making this part of our plan, does this put us in line for any of ODOT's infrastructure funding specifically, they had a good chunk specifically for safety improvements, would this, would this key us up for any investments from the state?
You know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that in terms of their, their funding that they just received, I know they put together some parameters for it, and they're very large projects, but it could be what we've done with ODOT in our region is, for instance, if, there's a lot of people clamoring for a left turn control signal at Baker Road and 99, as you're coming off of Baker Road and turning onto 99, right now, there's not dedicated left turn there, you yield into the traffic, and it backs up a lot when the high school is getting out, so we made a request to ODOT, that's an ODOT facility, we made a request to ODOT to change that, and we weren't able to get it funded locally as an independent project, but we were able to get it funded as part of a larger, long corridor, regional project from coast to Cascades or something like that, and so maybe there's a discussion of putting together lots of these smaller projects of pedestrian bicycle safety along that new corridor from X to Y, and that becomes a big project that gets funded. But I don't know, to be honest with you.
And, and And Zach, just to, at MWAAC, when we talk a little bit about the STIP, the pedestrian-bike multimodal approach has money coming to the state, it is, it, you know, it used to always be highways, and now we're looking at multiple, you know, trails and all those types of things, so there are monies available, but I don't know if those are specific on ODOT-controlled pieces, and so if we go into the city and we're going a couple blocks off, I, I don't know if that money is available, but there are people we could talk to to find that out.
Okay, excellent, thanks.
Other questions? Thank you for the presentation, Heather, I now am going to ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5107 to a second reading.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Sal, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the, the motion passes unanimously, and so we're going to, on its first reading, so we'll ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
Looks like I'm, it is reconnecting right now, she may have had some
Okay, there she is. Amanda, it passed, it passed unanimously. Amanda, it passed unanimously for a second reading.
That always happens right when your internet cuts out, right?
But Adam objected to the title only, so you're going to have to start from the top.
Inevitable. Inevitable. Okay, so we're on the second reading, it sounds like.
We are. Title only.
Okay. This is the second reading of ordinance number 5109, an ordinance adopting the OR 99W Lynnfield to McDonald Active Transportation Concept Plan as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Transportation System Plan, and amending Chapter 6 of the McMinnville Transportation System Plan.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5107.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Zach, seconded by Sal. Although, I'll ask Claudia to poll the council.
Counsel Garvin?
Aye.
Counsel Gary?
Aye.
Counsel Minkie?
Aye.
Counsel Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counsel Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Dropkin?
Aye.
After roll call, ordinance number 5107 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Thank you. That takes us to a consideration of a first reading with possible second reading for ordinance number 5108. And does any counselor object to having us read this ordinance by title only? Seeing none, we'll move to Amanda to read ordinance number 5108 by title only.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5108, an ordinance adopting the Yamhill County Transit Area Transit Development Plan as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Transportation System Plan.
Thank you. We will now call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Heather?
Yeah, so just like the previous ordinance, this is another supplemental plan to the McMinnville Transportation System Plan. And again, it's a plan we put together with a regional partner, and one that we want to make sure we're adopting as we move into updating our transportation system plan over the next couple of years. It comes to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission. I'm going to bring up my screen so I can enter some stuff into the record here. My computer gets tired at this time of night, just like I do. Okay. So tonight's consideration, again, same thing. You can choose to approve the recommendation of this Planning Commission, request a public hearing, or choose not to support the recommendation. And again, this is a legislative initiative, so there is no clock that's tolling on it. They took their vote and hosted a public hearing on November 18th, and the ordinance amends the comprehensive plan, adopting this Yamhill County Transit Area Transit Development Plan. I did not come up with that title. As a supplemental document to the McMinnville Transportation System Plan. And then it amends Chapter 7, which is called the Transit System and Transportation Demand Management Plan in our TSP, by replacing references of the 1997 Transit Feasibility Analysis, which was our last transit plan we adopted, with the 2018 Yamhill County Transit Area Transit Development Plan. So the logistics, City of McMinnville representatives participated in a Yamhill County Transit Area Initiative to update their transit plan in 2017 and 2018. Kelly Minkie and myself served on that committee representing the city of McMinnville. On June 26 of 2018, we provided a draft of this plan to you as the city council. On October 18th in 2018, the Yamhill County Board of County Commissioners approved the plan. And then notice was provided to DLCD about McMinnville's interest in approving the plan on October 22 of 2021. We provided notice, we published notice of the public hearing in News Register on November 9th, and Planning Commission hosted a public hearing on November 18th, where they voted unanimously to recommend this to city council. This achieves two of your strategies, similar to the other plan, but different actions, interestingly. So again, the city government capacity strengthens the city's ability to prioritize and deliver municipal services with discipline and focus by developing and fostering local and regional partnerships. So this is a partnership with the Yamhill County Transit Area. They provide transit to the city of McMinnville. And then our growth and development character goal, to guide growth and development strategically, responsibly, and responsibly to enhance our unique character by strategically planning for short and long-term growth and development that will create enduring value for the community, and evaluating plan for city service demands based on that growth and development impact. So the transit plan that we're adopting tonight actually looked at how we were going to plan, how we were going to grow into the future in McMinnville, and how transit could service that growth, and where we expected high-density growth to occur so that service could especially serve service that growth itself. So that's the coordination between the two. The history of transit in McMinnville, transit comes in many different forms in McMinnville. We have fixed route bus services, which actually is fairly unique for a community size of 34,000 people. To have fixed route bus services like we do in McMinnville, they're expensive to run and operate, and then we have three here. We also have dial ride, and then we have a commuter link bus service to other Willamette Valley cities. It's provided by Yamhill County Transit Area. We, the city of McMinnville, has development code that references the adopted transit plan for location of high-density residential housing. So we locate high-density residential housing where future fixed routes or existing fixed routes are for transit. And then the last adopted transit plan for McMinnville is the 1997 Yamhill County Transit Area Transit Feasibility Study. So in 2018, 20 years later, they went for an update. The update itself looked at the, you know, existing conditions analysis, then put together goals for performance and performance measures, then sought community input, and then looked at strategies and solutions based on the community input and the goals and performance measures, and then sought community input again, and then created a final draft. This is our existing fixed route and intercity services. So you see McMinnville is the center, and we have a transit area, we have a transit center area here, where you come and you get on to all the other, what we call the intercity services, so to travel to other cities. We primarily go down to Grand Ron, we go to Salem, we go up here to Tigard, and then up to Hillsborough. And then the Tigard and Hillsborough connections can get you into the metro system. This right here is a map of our fixed route system that we have. This has changed a little bit. This is from 2017. We've added on to it, extending some of the routes. And then Newburgh had a couple of fixed routes. Those have since recently, actually, we have, I'm on the advisory board for the transit system, and recently, we've elected to remove those because they weren't getting active participation, and they are expensive to provide, and they only serve a certain limited area. So I think Newburgh is mostly dial ride at this point. So the key issues and findings for the existing conditions, where we went through this process, is that route alignment's generally good. There were some key destinations and areas in McMinnville that needed more service, and then also more schedules and routes, and so more buses running on the routes. Weekend service in later and earlier hours were priorities that we heard from the community. And then being able to take people to different shopping facilities and actually locate them, so have a stop near the door rather than out here on Highway 99. So this is the Walmart facility. Because when we were updating the plan, we had stops out here on 99. People would have to walk through the parking lot to do their shopping, and then carry their bags back out to 99. And so we've worked with the different shopping facilities and have now located the stops right near the door to do that. The plan itself has timeframes of immediate, near-term, short-term, midterm, long-term, and it's a 20-year plan. We put together these increments of different terms because they're funding terms. So we actively go after funds to implement this system and provide this service throughout Yamhill County. Cynthia Thompson, who leads the Transit Area, does a great job at that. Our capital priorities for the first couple of years is to fund the bus stops. So when you drive around McMinnville, you don't necessarily know where all the bus stops are, because we don't have those really visible bus stop signs or shelters. And so that's the first capital improvement project, which is underway right now. They've been putting them out recently. Also to do new buses with consistent branding, that was done about two years ago, so you now see the purple and green buses driving around. That's created a lot more visibility. And then we're right now in design of this ADA bus stop program, where we're looking at how to make all the bus stops ADA accessible. We also, the plan talks about investing in increasing ridership, and by creating convenience and also marketing it. So there's investment in technology and programs for the system, so some operational investments. And then the capital facilities, as I said, the first project is sign and mark bus stops. The plan itself has a list of the projects and the costs associated with them, so much like a capital improvement program that we find in our facility plans. And this is what I pulled out for McMinnville. McMinnville changes are, was to extend this bus route here, as it's called Fixed Route 2, into the West Hills where it's being further developed. So it's really serving our growth areas. To look at, this route will come out here to the corner of Baker and Hill Road. Once this is all developed out, this route will come out here to Baker and Hill Road as well. They'll both turn around and go back. So you'll have two routes stopping here at the Baker and Hill Road intersection, and that's why there is planned multifamily there and commercial development. And then to expand out here by Shemetika Community College to get people into the different medical clinics that are down there. And then also, as I described, to do a better job of getting people to the shopping center. So in McMinnville right now, the emphasis is on bringing people from their homes to necessary amenities, so medical facilities and shopping, groceries and things like that. Do not serve our employment district yet with a fixed route system. This is the intercity links in terms of the existing system, and this is the plan for what the plan will fund in terms of those intercity links. So it'll make the intercity links more robust, put more stops on it, and take it a little further to here in Salem. So right now, it stops in West Salem, and we want to take it all the way into downtown, and also to connect better with the metro system. So the plan has a Chapter 10, which talks about supporting public transit with local land use policies. And they went through each city's local land use policies and scrubbed it for whether it supports transit. And then they have an appendix that does a detailed land use policy assessment. We looked at those for McMinnville, and this is the evaluation of our McMinnville policies. We're doing fairly well. We're mostly consistent. There are some places where we're partially consistent in there. And then this is an analysis of our codes. Where they say we're inconsistent is based on a process we don't even offer in McMinnville, and neither does Newburgh. It might be something we'll want to do moving forward. We do offer pre-application. We don't offer it in this form, and so it's something we can look at in the future. But looking at this, when we looked at the stuff we do do, we felt that we sat pretty well. And the things that we don't do really well, it's a great discussion for us to have when we update our TSP. So we didn't want to go into our codes and update them to reflect these inconsistent bars until we've gone through the TSP process. And that was a decision that the Planning Commission made. So tonight, really, the action just adopts this plan as a supplemental document to the transportation plan, and then amends Chapter 7 so that we are referencing this new plan and not the old 1997. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel discussion? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance 5108 to a second reading.
I so moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Zach. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify. It looks like it passes unanimously. Ordinance 5108 passes on its first reading unanimously, so we will now ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5108, an ordinance adopting the Yamhill County Transit Area Transit Development Plan as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Transportation System Plan.
Thank you, Amanda. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 5108?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly. We will call on the city recorder to poll the council.
Counsel Garvin?
Aye.
Counsel Gary?
Aye.
Counsel Minkie?
Aye.
Counsel Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counsel Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Dropkin?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5108 is fully adopted by a vote of six to zero. That concludes the city council for this evening. It is 9:28, and so I will adjourn that, and we will now move over to City Council Urban Renewal Agency meeting for December 14, 2021. I'll ask Claudia to do a roll call, and I bring this meeting to order.
Counsel Garvin?
Here.
Counsel Gary?
Here!
Counsel Minkie?
Present.
Counsel Chenoweth?
Present.
Counsel Peralta?
Here.
Council President Dropkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia. Tonight, we have one resolution, Resolution 2021-03, a resolution appointing members to the Urban Renew, Urban Renew, the McMinnville Urban Renew Advisory Committee. So we'll turn it over to Heather Richards to present.
Sorry, I was thinking this, I was taking through this as a consent agenda. So this is the, we had five appointments for the McMinnville Urban Renew Advisory Committee. Three of our applicants were people who have been serving on the committee that have re-appplied. We received five applicants, so it made it fairly easy. Three are reapplying, and then two are new applicants. The three that reapplied was Peter Kercher, Lisa Poole, and Alan Fox, who are all excited to move forward with the projects they've been working on. And then Jeff Knapp and Jamie Corr are the two new applicants that are being recommended to you.
Any discussion? I think we know the newer applicants of Jeff Knapp and Phil, but any discussion among the council or the agency board? Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-3.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Sal and seconded by Chris. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2021-3 passes unanimously, a six to zero. I will now adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 9:31. Boy, we did that in fast order. Thanks, everyone. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Take care.
And happy Hanukkah.
And happy Hanukkah.